We are all present except for Cindy and Robert. So everybody. Hey, student council. Oh, there.
Hi, um, thank you for having us back again. Today we had a meeting. We also had a meeting last week and we've been basically pretty swamped with deciding everything for homecoming, the decorations, how it's gonna work. So I'll just tell you like a little bit about that. But the good news is we've had a lot of people at both of, at like our first few meetings, way more than normal. We've had like people sitting on the ground. It's kind of crazy. I I just hope that the participation stays and we keep encouraging them with the field trip that we have at the end of the school year.
So last week we started a decorating committee for homecoming. We decided that we were going to decorate the one hallway that we have as kind of going through the decades like a giant timeline. So um, in between last week and this week, we made a big Amazon list of things we're going to order. And we finalized what we're ordering today. So it's going to look like as you're going through kind of the, as you're going through the decades, kind of the big things that happened in each of the decades. And then at the very end of the hallway is going to be a big painted banner that we're going to make. It kind of just says blessed the past, Hoco 2025.
Yep. So we've had that smaller committee, which has been really helpful. Um, and then also we've been kind of figuring out the details for pep rally because last year we had some feedback where some kids were saying that it was kind of like a little bit boring at the end, which it's supposed to be really fun. So we're working to make that better. We've been collecting a lot of feedback. Um, so this year we're going to find some new ways to um, include the crowd more like doing like the wave in between the powder puff plays or something like that. And we're also going to add some new games. We've been kind of thinking about maybe a capture of the flag game or a relay race with all the classes. Um, but we're also going to still keep a bunch of it the same because there are some favorites. And then we've also, because we're collecting a profit from homecoming this year from the All Sports Club, we have a larger role in collecting, like not collecting, well, finding more chaperones and more people to do ticket sales. So we've been working on that a lot as well.
Oh, right. So uh, today we also started painting the uh, Spirit Week banners. So we're going to be having them in two different locations. So in the lobby, there's going to be a bunch that just say like Monday, whatever's happening Tuesday, whatever's happening and as well as in the athletic hallway, kind of near the cafeteria. Um, and that we will be working on for the next few weeks. So it's kind of all we have.
Yep, that's it. Thank you.
Uh, I have a quick, quick comment. Um, I definitely appreciate the intro, um, all of the excitement coming from this year. Um, and I just wanted to just re-communicate around um, the excitement around the field trip, thinking about the end of the year activities. Um, the pep rally, Spirit Week, like I totally hear, right? Like, like all of the things that you're working hard towards. And um, I, I think just, just as we consider, you know, um, how things look moving forward, it's important to keep the student perspective forward. So thank you for bringing that to us today.
Thank you.
Yes.
We're, we like coming. It's really a nice thing to share what we're working on and have your guys support. So thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. Moving on to the approval of the draft minutes from September 10th, uh, we were all here. So anybody have any comments or questions? No? Motion to approve RP second Kathy, all of us in favor? Okay, uh, or forum?
I'm also.
Good.
Well, I'm excited to be here. Um, you know, I just want to thank everyone for coming out. And and I did just want to ask Mr. Mr. Hartman, is there a reason why all the students here? Is this part of a class or like?
Yeah, so participation in government is required to attend one board meeting. Normally they use you then in December, January, it closed the semester. It's the first time in nine years.
Thank, thank you so much. So it's always exciting to see everyone in the crowd. Um, so, so I just wanted to just thank everyone.
Yes, I just wanted to say that today's agenda um, has a really important discussion items, especially item C about the strategic plan, which I know the committee allotted with the district um, administration. And I appreciate that we're going to have a, a, a good overview and summary and give the board a chance to ask some questions because this was a document and really a path forward for the district that outlines some significant things that we want to pursue as a community, as a board and as a school district. So I think that um, we're looking forward to the conversation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Beltop, and great to see the pollinator garden at DPS.
Okay, moving on to the public forum. Residents, students, employees and business representatives of East Green Bush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and or operations of the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns during the public forums. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name and the, name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe on free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitor's forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered defamatory or stigmatizing or prohibited and will be declared out of order. All comment shall be limited to five minutes. We have Marie McBride.
Hi, is this okay? You can hear me. Um, Marie McBride, I am a former member of the All Sports Club and uh, board member and regular member, and I've stepped back in this year to help out with the Athletic Hall of Fame. We've had a change in our timeline. Our banquet for 2026 will be uh, April 18th. And then for 2027, we're going to have it April 24th, and that's our 25th anniversary. And that's a big accomplishment for us. Um, any applications for nominees will be due December 19th of this year. And the voting is going to take place in January. We have a January 22nd and it's no day of the 26th. So I wanted to update you on our Hall of Fame. Graciously invite you to come. We cannot buy you a ticket, but we would love to have you. Any questions at all about the All Sports Club or Hall of Fame? I'd be happy to answer any questions now or
at any time. Just make sure that some information gets out and distributed to the community as well, like through Parent Square and other forums, working with Mark Adams to make sure. I think that was something that I missed in the past and it's a great event.
Yes, thank you. Um, this year we also have updated our application um, to try to streamline that a little bit more. And I believe that is all been updated on the athletic website. Um, Mike Leonard has also stepped back in to keep the ball rolling. It's a huge undertaking. So um, we're trying to do that. But square, what is that called?
Uh, the parent squared software that the students and parents have.
That's all way.
It predates us, believe.
Yes, I'm sure it does. Uh, thanks for your time.
Quick, quick question. Um, I see the All Sports Club everywhere across like the district websites and everything. Could you just explain just very briefly, just exactly what the All Sports Club is?
The All Sports Club is comprised of parent, community volunteers that want to um, contribute to all sports. The mission of the All Sports Club is simply to support all sports in the East Green Bush Central School District. My personal case, I had a son and a daughter, both in high school at the same time, both playing sports. I couldn't be the, be everywhere. So I said, hey, if I just help with all sports, I'll be supporting both of them. That was over 20 years ago. So it's very rewarding. So I'm still giving back for that. But that's basically what we um, do is support all sports.
That sounds wonderful. I think as a parent, like I struggle myself being everywhere. Actually, I'm not everywhere, right? So it sounds like a great organization to um, to contribute towards. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And moving on to reports and presentations, capital project update.
So I'd like to invite our colleagues from La Bello Architects and Turner Construction to give us a brief update on where the current capital improvement project stands with any relevant updates. And again, we'll be inviting them back every second board meeting in the month, just so the board and the community can stay well involved on, on where this investment in our district is going. With that, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Good evening, everybody. I'm James Thomas. I'm with Turner Construction. This is Pasquale Marchesi. He's with Marchesi from La Bello Associates. One of these years. Uh, just to give area an update on phase one construction. So the Columbia roof, we give very update. We had our punchless walk today. Uh, so we will reach substantial completion uh, basically by the end of October. And then the final inspection will take place and then the warranty paperwork will start. So in the next week, uh, next couple of weeks, you're just going to see some miscellaneous detail work going on. We have still to replace the uh, smoke hatches on the roof. And we're adding some more ladders for, for accessibility.
James, originally was that slated to be this year and next year?
Yes, two years.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep. Um, and then you will see some site restoration going on around the uh, the building itself. As far as the, the Ted tennis courts and the basketball courts, those are open, crowded every night that I've seen. Uh, we did do some reseeding, some punchless work with it. For the most part, Fa- Phase 1A is, is completed. That's actually. Uh, Phase 1A change order su- summary. So there was a couple extras that uh, came, came down the pike at, at the end. So there was undercutting of roughly 150 yards at the basketball courts. Basically, when we proof rolled it, so we had a big roller goes across, the ground was loose. So we un-undercut that, put in, put in fabric and stabilized it. So that, that we had allowance for that. So that covered us there. Uh, we did level the softball field. So in left field, there was a, the ground settled. I'm not sure what ha- happened there, but it settled quite a bit where a player could actually run down to uh, root four on a fly, fly ball. But now it's, it's leveled up and at least I get, get a string until phase four, when we're able to re- regrade the outfield. Uh, another thing was we added metal edge to the shot put pit. It came out really nice. It did a black metal edge on that. And we installed the flare and, and section at catch basin three, which is what runs into the existing tree behind the behind there. But as you can see, contingency summary, um, we have, we still have roughly $49,000 remaining. And we'll hold on under that until Fa- Phase 1A is done and that'll just roll over to other phases.
Do you think there'll be any more need for contingencies for Phase 1A?
You never know, but right now we're, we're very, very hopeful that there's no need for it.
Okay.
This is where we saw this morning, uh, during the punch. We never know because, you know, let me say, if we see, uh, we will have another walkthrough and we may see.
We may see, we, we tried to put a ladder because right now to go from one roof to another, you have to go up. Then you go down to, again in the school, go through another area or another wing and then you go up again. Now we provide ladder that if you go from one side, from the stairs, you go inside of the roof. And then from there, there are ladders that make you go all around.
Okay.
If we find any area, then we may uh, maybe the um, the people, the, the staff say, hey, you know why? We may want to put another ladder here, stuff like that. While they get used to the new roof, we may do something like that. But as far as uh, scope, there is uh, we, we felt pretty comfortable today. That was pretty clear.
Quick, quick question. Um, I don't know if Jen or, or, or you, you two are going to be best for this. But thi- this 1A is a, is it $10 million? And I'm also wondering, um, we were under on our, on our, um, or on our subcontractor bid, like some $1 million. So, so looking at these figures, I'm just trying to put it into a framework of how meaningful this actually is. Like, I, I think this is probably relatively small to the overall project and I just wanted to just.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. The total um, budget for Phase 1A was just a tad over $9 million.
Yes, awesome. Thank you so much.
Uh, James and yes, sir. This uh, so with the roof, like we go through a season and then we find any issues.
Yeah.
Where does that funding come from?
So the roof has a 30-year warranty.
Was warranty from that piece?
Yep.
It hasn't gone through a whole season.
Yeah. So even if it goes through a whole season, the district would call, hey, we have an, we have an issue. They call the, the manufacturer. The manufacturer would dispatch. Either they would Nico, who was, was the installer, or they'd bring another installer to fix it right away.
Okay, um, on the world.
Correct. Yep.
Thirty.
30-year warranty. And they bought everything, including what's underneath the roof. I give everybody an up update on Phase 1, 1 and B. So exciting. We, we're starting on Monday. Monday night, 3 o'clock, uh, we are going to work our way into Janay and into golf. I apologize. Uh, we're going to start roughing in some of the electrical work for the new sport, sports lighting that's going to happen. The week following, we are going to start the clearing. And we are also going to start some of the logistics. So putting in the turning lane, getting ready for the road. Uh, the goal would be by Columbus Day or Indigenous Peoples' Day, we would start stripping the top, top soil on the existing football field, doing the removals. And then starting to move forward with a goal of starting the fill in November. The contractor anticipates weather pending, fill take about a month and a half. The goal would be to get the fill in before winter. So they can work on underground utilities. So when spring hits, we're ready to go. So we can just do our, finish up the drainage underneath the field and start the process with the turf and the track.
I can't read it, but where are the tree removals?
So right between golf and the church.
Okay.
So that, that section, the uh, the set section of woods coming from haze all the way up and then it wraps around right where the old garden was. Next, I'm going to turn this over to Jen. Oh, no, that's not Jen yet. Is it you yet? No, it's not you yet. Uh, so just to, so to, and Jesse, to answer your question. So Phase 1A, the pre-ref construction value uh, is 7.7.396 million. So that the roofing contract was 4.9. The site con- contract was 1.2 and we held a contingency of 122,000. So that brought us up to 8,955. So we had a delta to the positive of 1.263 million. Which Jen, correct me if I'm wrong, that goes, it goes back into the, into our, our, our numbers moving forward for, for site work. Uh, Phase 1, 1 and B had an original budget of 8,955. So the bids came in, site contractor was 6.4. Electrical was uh, just over a million dollars. Uh, there was a district direct purchase of equipment, which is 37, which is going to be the new scoreboards. So we're going to buy those directly and we're, we're going to install those. And then a contingency hold of $160,000. So right, right now, we've awarded 16 million dol- uh, 60 million dollars was the budget. Uh, we've awarded 14 million. So we have 2.3 million right now to, to the grid. Uh, overall bu- budget, we had 95.1 million. So our projected cost right now is 14, so we have 81 million left.
And James, just to clarify, this is the construction part.
Correct. This is the construction part.
Under budget and ahead of schedule is what's going on right now.
I never like to say the words ahead of schedule. Take it back, take it back. Yeah. That's right. Yeah.
The Phase 2, Phase 2 is the one we'll be really waiting for.
Yeah.
This is the one day it's going to be impacted, the elementary school.
Yeah.
Like, you know, everybody knows. Playground, the library renovation. So it would be kind of a template.
And air conditioning in the, in the school.
So we want to make sure that's after that.
And this is Jen, the, this is just an overall, uh, just a status of all the project but budgets.
Yeah. So this is just an overview and board docs is the full budget document by phase. So this is just giving an overview of where we were as of August 31st. Um, you can see where Phase 1A, right now the remaining um, balance on that is just a tad over 1.2 million. There's still soft costs. There's a little bit of construction left. So um, that's starting to turn into a more certain picture, picture. Phase 1B, there, the remaining balance is quite large because we're just in the process of getting the construction contracts executed and we'll have purchase orders up and those funds officially committed um, in, in the books and records for the month, in the month of September. So.
Jen, could you just clarify? James brought up substantial completion. Just define what that means and what the implications are for the budget.
Yeah. So when um, when we have substantial completion, that will allow us to file with SED and to go to the next phase of um, filing final cost reports. Um, that will help to start generating aid on the projects. So.
Beginning when?
Um, depending on, so uh, definitely in the 26, 27 fiscal year. Um, we'd be looking at generation of aid. It could be a little bit sooner depending on the timing of just closing this out. So it will be earlier than we originally anticipated because we do, we don't have to wait until this time next year to file the final cost reports for Phase 1A. We'll be getting them in um, perhaps towards the end of this calendar year or in the first quarter of um, next uh, in 26.
And, and Jen, like, like Ms. Ms. Mulligan, the, the aid, like that would come back. It's like 72 cents per dollar spent. Is that?
That's our aid ratio.
Okay, yeah.
Um, on this particular Phase 1A, we didn't have any maximum cost allowance overruns. So um, that should be fully equitable.
Okay, awesome.
Where's the money go? So I, I, I'm sorry for not understanding this part of it, but so let's just make a number up. We're seeking aid for 7.2 million. Let's say we get 7.2 million. Do you use that money to pay off the next phase?
Yeah. So, so just the financing of the project, we um, we borrow funds to fund the costs as we go along. Um, so we're paying, we have debt service principal and interest to pay on that. At the same time, once we're able to file our final cost reports and the aid cycle starts to run, we're aided on the project over a 15-year period. Um, so that aid will come in and help supplement um, basically help support the debt service that we're paying.
All right.
So um, this project was voted on as a tax neutral project, which means that we um, don't anticipate any additional tax levy to help pay for the project. So in other words, what we paid um, previously for debt service less uh, state aid will be the same from year to year.
Thank you.
Globally.
Thank you.
And Jen, the budget summary, the construction budget summary has Phase 1A at 7.4-ish and we have it at nine.
Yeah. So the, the budget, the overall budget includes all the soft costs too. So um, the total soft costs on the project were about 22%. So the entire project budget was $116 million and the construction value was 95 of that 116. That difference is the soft costs.
So the last, we just want to say thank you. I would like to have a shout out to Mr. Harkin and his staff. Because they bet, they, they made this first phase uh, very ea- easy to work. So I really appreciate you and your staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Discussion items, reserve update.
So we are at that point in the year that the business office works very hard with the external auditor to close out the finances for the fiscal, the prior fiscal year. So what we're going to discuss with you tonight is to close out for the 24, 25 fiscal year. Basically, what you should keep in mind tonight, what we examine at the end of the fiscal year is where the district stands, obviously financially, and how we can project into the future. More gran- more granularly, what that means is by law, we are allowed to carry 4% of the prior year's budget of unappropriated fund balance to be able to balance any subsequent year's budget if it is available. There are times where a school district may spend down all of their available fund balance and not have anything available. What we will discuss with you tonight is what does that picture look like? But what we will be asking of the board, this is a discussion item tonight that Mrs. Mulligan is going to lead you through. There will be some action items based on our recommendations to you for where we uh, allocate any uh, funds that we have available for the subsequent year. That she will talk about a very clear calendar of where we go from here and when we will potentially need you to take action. Or for you to give us feedback on you'd like to see things placed differently within the reserve plans that we're going to discuss with you tonight. So that's an overview of where we are. She's going to get very deep in the weeds with you tonight. So please, if you have those questions, as we've been doing all along, make sure you ask it. It's very important that we have everything clear for you tonight. So that when we come back at the first meeting in October, we're prepared to take appropriate actions. So Smolgin, right over to you.
I have a, I have a quick, I just want to just, I always got something to say, excuse me. But no, I, I really loved the presentation. Like I, I loved the capital, um, the capital numbers previously, how just one, one shot. I love these documents, you know, um, just, just, just one, you know, a, 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 a very, and I know it took a lot of work to, to get it like that. But I love how this information is presented. And before we got into it, I just wanted to say, even starting with this screen to explain, you know, I, I just, I just love how this presents. But thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So wanted to um, just start out uh, just with a basic premise of what fund balance is. Um, basically, fund balance is our savings account. That's the money that's left over at the end of the year. So when you look at um, we have revenues, our property taxes, our state aid, all of our other revenues, and then we have our expenditures, our salaries, our benefits. Um, the difference between those two is a result of either a surplus or a deficit. So over the years, those surpluses or deficits can accumulate and that's what creates fund balance. Basically, your savings account, just like in your household um, budget. So um, over the years, you know, we have accumulated fund balance. We have accumulated surpluses, um, which helps with financial stability. Um, it allows us to save maybe for future capital needs, which helped us with this project. Um, it helps with unexpected costs that may occur. Um, it also, there are certain um, legal reserves that um, come up where we may need to fund certain liabilities like workers' compensation or termination plain payments in relation to um, employees exiting the district. So I would just wanted to start with just some basic concepts on what fund balance is. Does anybody have any questions about that? The next thing I wanted to review is our actual results. Um, we're still going through um, our audit. So I do label everything as draft. Um, we're still, you know, working with our auditors, but this is one of the final steps um, in closing out the fiscal year is making determinations as to the difference between revenues and expenditures. What happens with that? Um, you know, if there's a deficit or if there's a surplus, how, how can we go ahead and um, you know, address any reserves? And what do we have to look at legally? Uh, Dr. Coats mentioned, you know, that 4% limitation, we can legally um, by statute, hold more than 4% that isn't designated for any other particular purpose.
Ms. Mulligan, quick question. 4%, is that at any point in time or do it have to be 4% at a specific point in time?
The end of the fiscal year.
Okay, perfect.
Yep. So in this case, it'd be June 30th, 2025. And it's 4%, the 4% um, value is looking at 4% of the next year's budget. So that is the 25, so the 25, 26 budget amount, which was 115.2 million dollars. 4% of that number is the threshold.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect.
So um, I, I put some additional information on here just for reference. This top part is a very over, broad overview summary. Kind of some context of our actual results from the 23, 24 fiscal year. The projected column was from back in the spring when we went through the budget process and we were projecting um, what our year ends results were. And then the draft actual is where we are, um, where our final results um, are expected to be. I wanted to show just where, how those projections performed against our actual results. And you can see that the revenues were right on. They were within 0.2%. Um, or $267,000 from the projections. The total expenditures, we had improved um, performance on our expenditures, which is a very good thing. Um, so we um, there was a projection that we were going to spend about 1.3 million dollars more than what we actually. Um so we um, there was a projection that we were going to spend about one point three million dollars more than what we actually did. You know, as we're going through this spring, you know, we had some messaging about, you know, being conservative on, you know, with our spending. So that was a contributing factor, I believe.
I'm curious, the other category where we have that.
Where it's at.
Yes, like what is other?
Yes. So I will get there in just one moment. So.
Sorry.
Yep, no, that's okay. Um because that's, that's the big piece of that. So um so at the end um of twenty four, twenty five, the district is looking at a total deficit of two point four million dollars. Now that two point four million dollars I'm going to show you isn't purely from operations. This includes all of our expenditures. So it includes the capital reserve that was appropriated. It includes the bus purchases that are not part of our reoccurring annual results. And that'll be important as we, you know, move through this on how fund balance and reserves are categorized. So at the end of the day, um we're looking at a deficit of two point four million dollars, which means we're utilizing fund balance in that amount. So we start with a beginning fund balance of X, which I will be able to show you. And we're going to decrease our fund balance overall in total by two point four million dollars. I'm not going to get into great detail here, but you can see this is the detailed revenues by line um and the variance is related to that. And down into expenditures. Now, obviously, salary and benefits make up close to eighty percent of our total um expenses. And those were are can be very predictable just through trending. You know, we have um our staff, we commit it. So it's really hourly expenses is really where um we can, the variance could come from when we're um doing projections. So the other category. Um Mr. Temple, to address that question, this is everything other than those categories, which include contractual expenses. So it could be um professional services, it could be supplies, equipment, repairs, utilities. Um all of those types of expenses. Everything else that's not salaries, not benefits.
So that's athletics too, nothing that? Does athletics?
The athletic other things. So athletic salaries would be in the salary line. Yep. So we're, so you're thinking um of at the programmatic level, at more of the program level. So this is at the object of expenditure, the types of expenditures that we have.
Jen, if people wanted to get dive deep into that, could they go to the budget document from last year in some detail in the presentation?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Yeah, I had to refer people to that because that's, that's super detailed line, it's line item.
Yes. And and the budget is structured in a way that's at the program level. So you'll move through instructional categories. You'll move through athletics um and then employee benefits. But within like the athletics, we still have salaries. Um we and and the other piece that we have some BOSI expenditures. We have some athletic software that we contract through the BOSI to obtain. So there's some um other types of expenses um within each of those programmatic areas.
Quick, quick question. Um considering that the way we've been budgeting is a rollover budget method and recognizing that we're one point six under now. What I'm wondering is, what is the impact on future budgets, recognizing that we use a rollover budget method? And in recognizing that we want to be conservative in our approach, you know, recognizing what one point six under means. But I'm just wondering from a model perspective, right? What is there any implications?
So just to clarify.
Yeah.
This, we're actually not.
Okay.
Under budget. This is a variance compared to projections of actual results. Okay? So um I didn't present that information in terms of what the budget to actually have that. But I didn't, in this presentation, I was more looking at, you know, when, when the board was looking at making decisions on the budget.
Yep.
You know, what were we looking at in terms of projecting our um actual results and just comparing to where we were on the final basis? Um in relation to future budgets, um having improved actual financial results, you know, we were anticipating a larger deficit means that our fund balance at the end of the year is going to be higher than what um we were projecting it to be. So um that will be helpful in um evaluating and perhaps looking at reducing reliance on fund balance and reserves going into the next budget cycle.
But what I'm wondering is, like, would that have a rollover impact? So like, like, because, because I think the rollover budget, we were saying like an extra two percent of of a stat. So if you take a static year of expenditures, we were saying like a two, three percent increase, if I'm not mistaken, for each subsequent year.
I understand.
So, yes.
So, right. So when we were doing projections, we were taking, you know, what we were anticipating this projected column. And we were increasing it based on um educated information in terms of what our contractual salary increases are. Um you know, it did not factor into uh any adjustments that the board may need to make in regards to staffing or um other operational items that would impact the budget. So it's basically, you know, anticipating what are those cost increases are going to be based on what we have today.
When do we know in this, maybe you're going to get to this, I apologize.
No.
When do we know if we, if the projected budget for twenty four, twenty five, or we actually have a deficit from twenty four, twenty five? That's what you're working on right now, right? And so.
Well, we, but um that, those final results don't really come about until August. Because we're closing out our fiscal year, so we're paying bills in the month of July that are applicable to the following year. So all of those factors have to be rolled in and closed out and evaluated and put into the correct fiscal year. So when our programs and departments are submitting invoices, we're making evaluations as to what fiscal year that is applicable to. At the end of the fiscal year, the um, you know, programs would be making purchases and putting up um purchase orders that may um come about. So that's committing funds, but some of those goods and services may not be delivered until after the fiscal year end, which then are new year expenses. So really, the month of July is when all of that information comes to finalization. And then in August, we're evaluating all the um end of year balance sheet accounts and making sure that we've cut the fiscal year off in the proper period.
Okay. And then the audit comes in and.
And then the audit comes in. Um this year was usually it's around the third week of August, and that's when they start looking at all the numbers. So um usually around the end of August, we have a a good sense of what that is, but there may be some open audit items that we're looking at finalizing.
And Jen, excuse me, is that what that, is that what that column is the draft actual?
It's just.
The final numbers that you've come up with.
Yes.
The subsequent, subsequent audit may change that slightly, but that's.
I'm not expecting it to.
But that's the closed out year as far as you ran the numbers.
Right, exactly. Exactly. And we're far enough into the audit process that I don't expect that to change, but this year we have new auditors, so wow, we're still finishing up that process.
And and you're going to explain to me, I'm a simpleton when it comes to the math, that how we don't have a two, how there's not a two point five million dollar deficit? Right? Because I'm looking at that number, friends, it's two point five negative.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So so, yep, and that's what we'll get to next. Okay? So I didn't know if anybody had any other questions on the, on just the projections to actual. Okay. So.
Good job.
Thank you. I apologize if I'm nasally, I'm a little bit of a head cold. Okay, so I'm going to move over to this page, and this is in the reserve discussion document. This is the third page. I I think this might be a little bit helpful kind of going through this first before my nice big spreadsheets that I love. Um so when we're talking about fund balance, you know, just going back to the concept, you know, that two point four million is going to be a reduction of fund balance. We're going to be using fund balance to support those activities. So at the start of the year, total fund balance, this includes everything. This includes um all of our reserves, assigned fund balance and unassigned fund balance. Started the year off at thirty one point five million dollars. At the end of the year, that balance will be twenty nine point one million dollars because we had a total deficit used of fund balance of two point four million dollars. Okay. So I had mentioned before that some of that two point four million is also related to capital reserve spending and uh bus purchases, which are not included in our general fund operating budget at the time the voters are approving on that. These are adjustments that happen as a result of the voters approving use of those specific reserve funds. So when we break it down, I'm using these terms, operating, non-operating. So when I talk about operating, I'm kind of referring to the general fund budget that's approved by the voters. And the not operating things are the things that are being approved, that are adjustments to the budget. For example, like our capital project, there was um a proposition to approve as part of the funding of that project, two million dollars of our capital reserve fund that we had. So this year, we spent the remaining portion of that capital reserve fund, which was just a tad under one point seven million dollars. So when we're talking about that two point four million dollars, one point four of it was related to these other reserve things. And I can talk about that a little bit more in a second.
So Jen, I'm sorry to jump in, but so so that's, we're expecting to draw down at that one point four. Because that's, that has been specifically approved to draw down from those fund balances. So out of that two point five, we were expecting that one point five drawdown of the fund balance. It was just a million dollars in operational that.
Right. And that's where the focus is in terms of our actual results when we look at, you know, we, we budgeted. Um we have our tax levy, our state aid, all of our other revenues, our salaries, our benefits, our normal everyday operations. That's part of our general fund budget that's approved by the voters. We ended up with a deficit of a million dollars in relation to those items. And how um part of, so that million dollar deficit, operating deficit, we did use some reserves, and that's part of the action items that we're going to be talking about. We are looking, we are proposing to use some of those reserves um to help fund that deficit. So uh for example, we had planned as part of the twenty four, twenty five budget to spend two hundred and eighty thousand, it was an estimate, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars of the EBLR reserve, which is the employee benefit accrued liability reserve fund, which are monies that are set aside for termination payments when employees exit the district. So retirement incentive payments or for twelve month staff that may have left and had a vacation balance, those types of things. So we had just did a very rough estimate as part of the budget process that we were going to appropriate two hundred and eighty thousand dollars of that. Our actual expenditures related to those termination payments for the fiscal year ended up being four hundred and sixty six thousand dollars. Through the budget process in the spring, it was expressed by the board that we should try to utilize that reserve to the extent that we can. So that was the rationale that why we were using the, are proposing to use four hundred and sixty six thousand dollars of that reserve, which those monies are part of our regular operations uh to help fund that. Then the other component is ERS. So ERS is the employees' retirement system. That's for the non-instructional uh staff side of the house. Um the twenty four, twenty five adapted budget also include a planned spending of four hundred thousand dollars. That's purely what that is. It's um, you know, there was a decision by the board to spend that amount, and we're proposing to actually spend it now. Um prepaid, this is a little bit of an accounting nuance. Um basically, sometimes we have prepaid expenditures. In this case, it was related to software purchases for digital subscriptions on curriculum. And um basically, when we spend that, it's for a future period, but we've already spent the money. So it's considered non-spendable fund balance, so we have to designate it separately. That's a a government accounting standard that we we need to follow. So that's what that prepaid increase is. After we um take those reserves that we're utilizing, there's basically three hundred thousand dollars left over of that deficit that will actually impact that unassigned fund balance category when we're talking about the four percent part of the um fund balance. Then our non-operating deficit. So we had our bus purchase reserve. So this is related to our actual expenditures, less the state aid. That reserve is set up. So the state aid that we receive on bus purchases are deposited into that reserve fund. And then we spend um the buses. So that's like the net use of that bus purchase reserve. Then the capital reserve of that two million dollars, this was the remaining piece. We had spent a little over three hundred thousand in the prior fiscal year. Um so this is the remaining portion of that two million dollars. Um we have very little in tax tertiary um settlements this year. And then this is just the um interest that we've earned, the investment earnings on our reserves that are increasing the balances for last fiscal year.
Yeah, I just want to say, I think that's a very important piece, the interest earnings. So like on the um, on the expenditure side, right? So like, for example, when we see like the EBLR at a four hundred and sixty six thousand dollar expenditure, we earned two hundred and fifty three thousand in interest, which helps that this, that that helps offset the expenditure, right? So 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 it's almost, it's almost like a reduction from the interest earnings. Um so so I I say that to say there's a benefit um to maintaining reserve balance, right? Like we, we incurred an expenditure, we offset it through earnings, um which is a benefit to the taxpayer. Obviously, we don't want loads of cash just sitting in there idle, but the idea that we need less funds from earnings is a very important piece. Um and I, and I love your, your, your next sheet, which kind of this sheet right here, that that kind of makes that, that evident. Um and and I just like the idea of reserve balances offsetting um operating expenses um from earnings.
Jen, the EBLR expense was more, was, do you present it to the retirement incentive or the prevention process?
In terms of the two hundred and eighty thousand, um nope, just we hadn't gone through that level of detail um to determine exactly what that would be, and we hadn't trended it out. So just getting acquainted with some of the data.
Like.
My first year didn't have all that data. Now we know how to get that information out of the system. And obviously, that's a variable item every year. So um it's a matter of, you know, going through the budget, is there a plan to use it? Perhaps if, if that is what the board is interested in using to help fund those on an ongoing basis, then we might fine tune that estimate based on the prior year expenditures now that, you know, we're able to run that out a little bit here.
So another question, thinking of last, it's just, so so when, when the decision is made to pull money out of the EBLR reserve balance or for the ERS, those are pots of money that are specifically allocated for those. If it, if, if the decision is not made to pull out of there, it has to come out of the unallocated fund balance, gives us overall less flexibility in the budget. So that's why we have those specific pots of money to pull those out of to to keep the unallocated balance as high as we can.
Yes. So so generally, um when we have individual reserve balances, basically, and you know, this is a, a project that need to go through is developing a more formal reserve plan. It's been several years since the district has updated, I think maybe even prior, pre-COVID. Um is to evaluate what is an appropriate balance in the reserve fund. So for example, um in the teacher's retirement system, the some the reserves are governed by general municipal law, they're sectioned GML six and the different paragraphs. Um but some of them have prescribed limitations, other, others are just how we feel, you know, as a district, as as the board, as as management, what is appropriate level of reserve. That's always a hard question to answer. So for example, with TRS in the law, it actually says you cannot hold more than ten percent of teacher salaries or salaries that are related to the teacher's retirement system so that you have a maximum balance. And you also have a limitation on how much you can fund that on an annual basis, two percent. Now, that's a newer reserve fund that the state had created. Prior to that, the regular ERS general retirement reserve didn't have any of those pieces actually prescribed in the law. You know, so that reserve had gotten a little larger here um and actually was used to help fund the capital reserve. So there's regulations as to how you can move, move reserve money around, um not to get too far into the weeds on that. But basically, best practice is to be able to evaluate what is an appropriate balance? What do you want to keep for rainy day? Um generally, it's not best practice to use those for reoccurring operating expenditures. So for example, um you know, right now, going into the twenty five, twenty six budget, we are using that. That was helping balance, you know, that budget. But where maybe a perfect case scenario for, you know, a rainy day fund is if the TRS and ERS retirement systems had a huge increase in their contribution rates. And you wanted to just take that increase in the contribution rate to help build it into the budget maybe over time, over a couple of years, you know, instead of like having it so like using the reserves to help with those situations rather than having it fund a significant portion of the annual operating expense, which is what the twenty five, twenty six budget is starting to do. And that's the picture that, you know, will need to be reviewed.
How much are we using for twenty five, twenty six?
So in the budget, the TRS reserve um has a planned appropriation of about one point four million dollars. The ERS um the non-instructional has a planned use of about one point five million dollars. Um the annual TRS um expenditures. Um. Our annual TRS expenditures are about four point one million dollars and our annual um ERS. ERS expenditures are about one point eight million dollars. So of um, you know, that six million dollars in retirement expenditures, about three million dollars of the reserve is being used. So really this year's coming budget is, is is using fifty percent of our annual expenditures to help on that.
And so we either use the rest of it or there's well, I, I, I can wait to that budget time, but it seems like if we don't use the reserve to come up with that in the budget then.
There are questions at the moment? I know there's probably lots of questions. Um, okay, so now coming over to this longer spreadsheet is basically um, the itemization of our fund balance. So previously I had mentioned our total fund balance at the start of the year. I'm at the very bottom left hand side of this spreadsheet is thirty one point five, almost thirty one point six million dollars. Above that line is the details of what is comprised of that total fund balance. So we had that little nuance of a non-spendable prepaid fund balance and then we have reserves. So workers' compensation liabilities. We have a reserve for unemployment, uh, the EBLR termination payments, TRS. So these are the beginning balance in each one of these reserve categories. Um, tax servisaries. Um, encumbrances are what commitments the district made. So open purchase orders at the end of the year that have not been fulfilled. So basically what this means is that we're carrying forward a portion of the prior year budget to fund those expenditures in the, in the next year. So um, we started the year off with those open purchase orders that would have been fulfilled during the twenty four, twenty five fiscal year um, of seventy, seven hundred and forty seven thousand dollars. This appropriated fund balance is six point six million is what you would see in the budget document um, to help fund the twenty four, twenty five budget. So this is the amount of fund balance that's been committed if we spend everything. So this means we're spent, you know, the revenues and the expenditures came out to the budget plan to the penny. We would have, this is in essence, kind of like the structural budget deficit that you may have heard us talk about in the spring. Doesn't mean we're going to spend it though, and that's the key, but we're starting to, but you spend this million dollar operating deficit. Um, and then this unassigned fund balance is that four percent that's not designated for anything. And we're supposed to be limited on, on not having more than four percent. So then the rest of this spreadsheet takes you through the activity through the year. So the next column is the um, interest earnings on those reserves and how they are allocated. They're basically allocated based on the average, you know, the balance that's sitting in those reserves. Um, the next column is um, the revenues. So this would include the piece of revenues that is being allocated to our bus purchase reserve at the four hundred and seventy four thousand. And then the balance of our revenues of a hundred and six. So our total revenues, you'll see that on the actual results, a hundred and seven million dollars. Then um, I'm going to just back up. Everything highlighted green is like the action items. The, those are like the action items in terms of what the board would be um, proposed to, to vote on. The next column is the expenditures. So this is breaking down, the district had a total of a hundred and ten million dollars in expenditures and how that is impacting reserves and fund balance. So like I said before, the EBLR, the four hundred and sixty six thousand, those termination payments, those expenditures are being assigned to that reserve category. Um, then uh, this is the prepaid nuance. So this is where we get into some of the other nuances because somebody, the question is, is we had a deficit, how can we fund reserves, right? It's kind of like, it's, it's hard to, to understand what that happens. And really it's about the buckets of the assigned and unassigned fund balances, how, how that gets managed and how we have to legally account for that. Um, so for example, like when um, we had a hundred thousand dollars less in outstanding purchase orders. So what that means, we have to decrease that balance and it gets dumped into the unassigned category. So that's a nuance. So that is increasing our unassigned balance. And then um, as part of the adopted budget for twenty five, twenty six, um, there was a reduction in the amount that was going to be appropriated to fund this year's budget. So that reduction, we have to reduce that. We can't show anything more in our financial report than what was approved in the twenty five, twenty six budget. So if you look at the twenty five, twenty six budget, you'll see appropriated fund balance in the amount of four million, three seventy one. So what that means is we have to reduce that and it gets placed into the uh, unassigned fund balance. So that is also increasing the unassigned balance up above the four percent level. Um, then we have um, tax servisaries. So tax servisaries, um, we evaluate them on an annual basis. We get updates from our legal counsel and we adjust them um, based on anticipated exposure. We can get into further con, you know, I think that some of that is more litigation things, but we basically reduce those um, tax tertiary balances. So we had open tax servisaries for the twenty three tax year and the twenty four tax year. And based on the evaluation of that, we're recommending reducing those reserve funds to that anticipated exposure, which would be eighty five thousand and three hundred and thirty thousand. So what happens when you reduce this reserve, the reserve, the regulations, general municipal law indicates that you, that any unused balances go back into the general fund on, on, on assigned fund balance. So that would also be increasing that unassigned bucket. Then it's whatever else you have left over. And that's where the reserve funding comes into play. And this is another way to look at it. This bottom part of this third page is how do we get there? From where we started at that four point four million dollars. You remember that I mentioned that of all of our operating results that weren't used in other reserve categories, there was three hundred thousand dollars that still needed, that's going to impact that unassigned fund balance. Then we had that encumbrance reduction on those POs, that appropriation um, reduction, and then the tax tertiary reserve reduction. So before we do anything, that's placing our unassigned reserve fund balance at seven point five million dollars, which is six and a half percent of the next year's budget. So that's where we're looking to um, propose to take one point seven million and reassign that basically by funding other reserve categories. And then further maybe taking an action after the end of the fixed fiscal year, meaning that it would be effective in the new year for new tax tertiary exposure. And we'll talk about that a little bit more. So what this recommendation is doing is actually having our unassigned fund balance over the legal statutory authority. Not uncommon in school district. It's happened in this district before. It will be a non-compliance finding in the audit. Nothing more than that. Um, and, and then having a plan to take a look at, while we have some exposure, we had a reassessment in the town of East Cream Bush. We have had, now this is only a portion of, is a recommendation, making sure we're setting aside funds to help fund those new tax servisaries exposures that we have. Which, which are upward of close to three million dollars, but we're not funding, we're not looking to reserve that because obviously we're looking at some prior experience, but knowing that the activity has increased. So we want to be conservative and mindful of that. So when we're all said and done, technically after the end of the fiscal year, um, that's when we'd be at our four percent level. So then it's like, okay, where, what do we do with that? Where do we assign that fund balance? Um, so a couple of things that we looked at is, you know, bus purchases are part of our, our annual, you know, we have a fleet of a hundred and two buses. If we don't stay on a cycle of replant, replacing them on a regular basis, we'll get caught behind. Um, and also there's the EV bus mandate. Uh, effective July first, twenty twenty seven, we're no longer allowed to buy diesel, gas, fuel buses. They all have to be zero emission. Now granted, in the new state budget, the latest state budget, they did approve for opportunities for extensions to twenty four month extensions. Um, providing that you're showing effort to um, meet the mandate. So there may be opportunity to purchase fuel and diesel buses after that date, but we don't know that until, you know, um, we get to that point. Um, so over the last couple of years, we've been funding that bus reserve at about an eight hundred thousand dollar level. What that does is it helps continue to have um, what we historically have had for new bus purchases in our twenty six, twenty seven bus purchase proposition. So that, that's why that was the rationale behind that. Then because we're significantly appropriating the reserves, the retirement reserves, it's like, okay, let's try to slow that down. And that's why um, the TRS and ERS reserves were chosen to fund that. The six hundred and sixty eight thousand, that's funding it up to our maximum level based on what's prescribed under that particular reserve law. And then um, after we fund the capital bus reserve, basically that three hundred and eight thousand for ERS is just what was left over. Um, and then there's the tax cert reserve. So there are definitely different things you can do with this. At the end of the day, our fund balance is twenty nine million dollars, no matter what, how you cut it. And it's a matter of how can you strategize and make sure you're utilizing your reserves, but at the same time being mindful to maintain them to a certain extent to be able to close future budget gaps. So there's a lot there. Um, and um, you know, so there could be even a, a, an option of perhaps not funding the tax tertiary reserve as much and maybe funding the bus reserve more, you know, or but we, we definitely cannot fund the TRS reserve any more than that, or we'd be exceeding what's allowed in the law.
Are we, is this forward thinking to the four percent? Or, or is this for the, we're ending the twenty four, twenty five? Cause I thought we have until the end of the fiscal year to come up with that four percent number.
So we're talking about, yeah, we're talking about June thirty, twenty twenty five, we'd actually be over the
Okay, I thought we were thinking about.
But kind of like how, you know, we're, we're, we're making sure we're looking at what our new exposures are and we want to set that up, you know.
I understand.
So it, there's a timing thing there, but.
And, and, you know, forgive me, you know, I was at the meetings and we're trying to listen to the budget stuff. It's really complicated. You're doing a great job. It's amazing. But you as a, the board made determinations about the reserve funds, right? Are we taking any of that back? Because you came up with the budget for twenty five, twenty six and you said you were going to use certain budget things. I'm just trying to figure out.
So one of the things, so are we actually going to use it in twenty five, twenty six, I think?
I guess so, yeah, all of that, yeah.
Yep. So um, in the spring, there were projections as to what we were going to use. We're too early in the fiscal year to do those projections. We haven't, you know, we're trying to close out the prior year. What will end up happening, um, you know, we're in the process of filing our state aid claims. Um, you know, we'll have state aid runs that will sure up what we budgeted um, for twenty five, twenty six for state aid. That will picture will become clear that those budget numbers were um, good. Um, that will happen usually December, January, we'll have some additional time under our belts to be able to see, you know, how, how staffing changed. We have vacancies. You know, things of that nature, vacancies aren't good to um, programmatically to be able to carry out the operations that we need to do. For example, like bus drivers, we want to fill those vacancies, but on the flip side, we're not spending that money either. So it changes those projections. So there's a lot of factors that can change that picture. Um, you know, there were some things we did with health insurance right at the end of the fiscal year, you know, there's enrollment. So we haven't looked in, that's when that analysis will start to happen over this last calendar quarter and into the first quarter, and then we'll be constantly looking at it. So I have what we projected to use as a last spring, but to say that that's what's going to happen, I would say would be inaccurate.
Okay. Put, put one million into tax cert, right? And then we find out we don't need it. How, and I'm sorry to ask this question, I should have looked at this before. How easy or hard is it to move it from another fund?
So um, in terms of the, so what we would do in the spring is we'd be able to look at that. Um, the tax tertiary reserves would, could go right back and it goes right back into the general. That one will, could be reduced and closed out with board approval.
Which ones can't be, are there certain of these reserves that are hard to move out?
Yes, bus, the bus, the capital reserve.
Oh, because you're voting on those, we voted on the bus and the capital, yeah, yeah.
Those are probably the hardest. The other ones have some rules, but they're um, definitely more flexible.
So there's a
By baby, because for example, the retirement reserve, um, you know, it, it had a lot, it had like three or four years of annual expenditures. And when you look at how they establish that TRS reserve, they kind of put some fences on it. So you can kind of, you know, so we were able to, the board was able to approve to reduce that reserve and place it into a capital reserve. So there's a whole book on reserves and how you can do them and what, where you can move them. Um, so we have to always look at that carefully, but generally capital reserves, those are the ones that you can't touch. And, and like EBLR too, that's another one. You can only use that. So the other thing is you can only use those reserves for that purch, purpose. Um, but there are, you know, we have to look at the specific rules under that particular, under the reserve.
What is best, the most easy to predict spend down because it's like, I mean, we have a standard replacement cycle, right?
In theory.
Mm-hmm, yep, in theory.
I've got, I, I think great presentation, very detailed. Thank you, Jennifer. Um, looking at the recommendations, I think it's very sound thinking. I can support the uh, the plan as it's written here. I'm always hesitant to fund tax tertiary to that level. But I know there's some flexibility and as those cases get settled, we do have some flexibility with some of the things. So I think from a starting point, this is a good plan. Um, I would recommend moving forward unless someone has, you know, some other considerations they'd like to ask questions about. I think it's very sound and a good, a good.
Jen, do you want to just going a little deeper on the dialogue that we had in between our exposure and your liabilities for tax or versus the concern?
More, more, more ones?
So in the last couple of years, so back in um, yeah, I'm going to go back. So these uh, begin, like this twenty four tax tertiary at the beginning of the year, that was pretty much a hundred percent of our exposure, a hundred percent. This year, um, because of the number of cases that we had, we got really into the weeds. You know, we looked at, you know, what um, what they were, their values were and what they were claiming and what those reductions, you know, some of them are very, very large reductions because that's what they can do. And then it's a matter of are those realistic? So the tax tertiary of the new year in twenty twenty five, meaning fiscal year starting July one, twenty twenty five, um, which basically those are all filed in July, August timeframe, um, was over three million dollars. When we looked at everything together, including the prior ones, which were the prior ones, where a little, prior two years were a little bit smaller. Um, so, um, but the reserve is only looking at the one point one because we're, we were evaluating some of that likelihood. And, and trying to be more realistic.
Or there are, there's no ceiling on that one, is there?
Basically, um, the reserve says that your anticipated exposure, so you could reserve a hundred percent of it, but in light of I didn't think that made the most fiscal sense, knowing a little bit more.
The trends are, we don't settle.
Yeah, yeah. Listen, I trust you a hundred percent. My old, my question was if once you put that eight hundred thousand into buses, you can't take it out. So why not, why not put it into the tax cert, but know the concept that we may use it for buses?
So here, so here's the thing. So um, we're basically our own bank when it comes to buses. We don't, at one point in time, the district borrowed to, you know, and obviously when you borrow um, for anything, it costs more, right? You have debt service, you have interest, you have bond council, you have, you know, some of those soft costs. So where we're able to set aside funds, ultimately, we'd love to see that like actually built into the annual budget where like there's a plan to fund that reserve and to use that reserve because we have that annual need. But historically, that has been funded based on year-end results. But now when we're in a position of, we're looking at, is this always going to be the case that we're able to fund them in the future? Like I didn't quite, until the final picture came out, I didn't know we were even going to be able to fund a bus reserve. But now we're going to be able to buy those reserves. It'll sit in the bank, it will earn interest and we won't have to go out and borrow and have interest costs related to that.
And I think from a practical standpoint, one of the things we talked about as a board in the past was that why not front load your purchases of gas and diesel buses? Because the mandate, those buses are a quarter of the cost of an EV bus.
You've been buying them every year?
Yeah, I think one year we actually went pretty high. Yeah, I think one year we actually went pretty high. Yeah, we went above it to get more in the fleet. So we wouldn't have, you know, no one, the EV mandates were coming down the road and the cost of those buses.
I don't want to harp on taxes though. So keep in mind, when you are funding a bus reserve, yes, you're paying cash for your buses, but you're also drawing aid from the state on the purchase of that vehicle. The position that we don't want to be in right now, we're trying to evaluate when we look at the tax liabilities. Is this the new normal? And we're going to start large, significant payouts? Or is this kind of the top of the bell curve and it's going to ease off?
It's the top of the bell curve.
I'm not, I'm not as confident as you on that one. One of my concerns is I've watched some of our neighboring districts that have not reserved for this and find themselves in a position where they're bonding, have to pay those liabilities. And then you find yourself in a position where that debt sits on your balance sheet until it's paid off. And that comes right out of, comes right out of classrooms. I hate to put it that way.
As bonding is bonding, subject to voter approval as well for buses.
For, for buses, yes.
But just to answer that, I don't know if I fully got the answer there. So like, are tax certs non-interest earning accounts? Cause like, I think the question was if we put everything there and you can move it out of that account, what is the, to have the bus reserve? Does, what's the benefit of that?
The benefit would be to know that we have those funds set aside to do that. So if I tried to put a model together of, um, where, you know, for this year, we're projecting an operating deficit and we really need to use those funds, maybe we can't put them in there. So I guess this is guaranteeing that we can continue to purchase, like if you put up a, so let me see if I can try and explain this. So as part of next year's budget, twenty six, twenty seven, you know, we wanted to continue to buy those eight buses. You would need to build that into the budget or have a reserve fund or authorize borrowing for it. So, um, if you don't have those set aside.
No, I get that. I guess I'm going to So but bus reserve earns interest, the other
All of this earns interest. Every dollar that's sitting here is earning
So to the
I, my understanding, you can't, you couldn't move from the one reserve to another reserve until the end of the fiscal year?
So in terms of like the tax surchargeary in the spring, we might get an updated picture. And we could look at reducing that exposure, um, and helping it fund the, uh, the, um, just the general operating deficit that we're anticipating.
And, and Jen, I'm just curious, like, cause what
I guess, I'm sorry, I'm interested, but you can fund the bus reserve at any point in time you want to in the year. But usually things happen at year end because you have certainty as to where things are.
What, what, what I'm hearing you say right now is that, um, you're looking to create, um, a longer term strategic plan and use the different funds, um, to kind of identify, um, you know, future spending. So I, I think there's like an intuitiveness to spending in, in reserves, right? That, you know, if you have a bus reserve, right, like, like how you approach that category have implications for future spin. So what I'm, what I'm hearing is, is that you're trying to move away from year to year decision making and, and use kind of the structure. And I could have, I'm just wondering, I don't know.
I think there would always be year to year decisions on these because one, you always have to authorize the spending of even outside the budget process. And, you know, there's always changing circumstances. So, but in terms of what you're talking about, like if, if we're always going to have to buy buses every year, that would be good to have that as part of the
So if, if I'm gonna, I want to dumb this down slightly, I'm sorry, because it's just So if we took that eight hundred thousand and put it in the bus, we can't use it for anything else. So the good news about doing that is we then know that we're buying buses. The bad news is we can't use it for anything else.
But if eight hundred thousand is in the tax cert, you couldn't
Definitely. I like flexibility over, over anything. I, I definitely, like, I was thinking exactly how, how, how Mike was putting it, you know, about flexibility. Looking at, you know, but, um, yeah, so I, I would definitely recommend, I like the plan.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to hold us up on this particular issue. This is going to be very elementary. Um, I will admit that my seventeen year old brain is melting a little bit right now. But I just don't really understand fully what a tax surcharge, I don't know if I'm saying it right, what it is and why it's more flexible than the other buckets of money that we're talking about. Like I don't understand why it's more flexible. And I'm really trying to take everything in, but I just wanted to ask.
So tax surcharges is when, you know, our, um, there's, uh, property owners within the district, typical commercial property owners that are challenging their assessment. So they think that their assessment may be too high. So there's a process where, um, a homeowner could grieve their assessment um, and look to have that reduced. They could even go into small claims court. Or they could actually file, you know, to have, um, their assessment reduced. And then it would be a process of evaluating that, like getting an appraisal of the property. It could be part of their business model and how much revenues and things that they earn. Like a hotel, you know, may have very low occupancy. The value of that hotel could be a lot less, you know, over time. So there's a lot of things, um, that could go into why, um, a property could be looked at as this is your neck of the woods, you can
Ask your dad if he thinks he's paying too much in taxes. That's what you could say is like, you know, you know, I think my house is only worth three hundred thousand, but the town thinks it's worth four hundred thousand. I want it reduced to three hundred thousand. If you've already paid the taxes on a house worth four hundred thousand, you want your money back. And so we have to make sure we have that money.
So the court, but keep in mind, we don't decide sitting here at the table whether that gets reduced. It goes to a court. A judge decides. Either A, they're going to prospectively just reduce the value of your property. Or B, they're going to order that refund to come out of an account of all the municipalities that are affected. So it's not just the school district. So if your house is in the town of East Green Bush, the school district has to pay a little piece, the town has to pay a little piece and potentially the county a little piece as well.
But the bus one, it, it's set up in a way that you can't, if there's no flex, there's certain funds that aren't flexible. Other ones are.
Do you see a large uptick in residential search filed?
We, we have, um, we have quite a few, uh, scars, small claims that have come in. I think we usually have like four or five and we have over thirty, but the total dollar value of those is not, it's small in relation to the larger
We have a list. I remember looking at the list.
Yes, the list was shared.
So if I can say back what I think I'm hearing, for the time being, the plan as it's presented, the board is comfortable. Or would you like to see anything moved from the proposed tax or share or from the bus account back to the tax or share account? Cause this will help us for planning purposes for the next meeting. Cause again, at the next meeting, we need to begin to ask, start the process of asking the board to approve the placement of certain reserves. So Jen can finalize the audit process to do our final submission to the state as well.
Yes, yeah. Do they earn interest that same rate or? Like I, I, I'm being dense too. I, I, I guess I don't understand if we have one account that's very flexible. I, I don't understand the hundred cargo. I don't actually, I'm not opposed to it. We need to fund buses. I just don't understand the, the why, like, or like the finances behind it.
So Jen, correct me if I'm wrong, giving your voice break. As far as interest earnings, while we're designating these accounts, it's all sitting in the same bank at the same interest rate. So it's whether we put it in buses, whether we put the tax certs, it's going to earn the same interest. I think the, the thought behind putting it in buses and maybe dovetailing off of what Jesse was saying and what Jen was, I think, trying to explain. You're now starting to build some of that surety into the budget. And if we know that our vehicles travel over fifteen years, a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy thousand miles, and then we have to replace them, it's starting to build that surety into the budget of, we have this money designated. At some point, we're going to try to build into our operating budget, the potential of it sitting in the budget rather than a reserve. Versus if we put it in tax cert and all of a sudden our, our exposure becomes real liability, we don't have that money earmarked in transportation. And now we have that question of what do we do?
And what would we do in that case? How do you close that gap?
You potentially don't buy vehicles out here.
If the exposure is greater and so let's, we keep them in bus. So then suddenly we have a tremendous amount of exposure.
If the exposure becomes a reality, either you have to look into cost savings within the budget to be able to pay the difference. Or you're subject to borrow because once, once a judge signs off on it, there's very limited opportunity for the district to do anything. You are subject to payment over that specified period of time. But just keep in mind too, while we're saying we're seeing new exposure, like almost three times what we've seen in the past, those settlements don't, I'm not going to win when I say it. They haven't been at maximum exposure. There's either been, like I said, a prospective reduction of what the property value will be or very low payments. And it's always a percentage of what they've asked. And, and some of them are extreme, as Jen said, what we see.
Just from the twenty, the two twenty four month extensions, is there a reason to not have a dedicated fund? I mean, what's the likelihood of its extension with, you know, the state says you've been planning for this? So
So one of the things that we have had to file this year and the year before is the state is looking for you to affirm that you've made a good faith effort on conversion to EV. So have you done a feasibility study? Have you written any grants to try to get funding? Beyond that, it's, I don't want to say it's been chaos, but there's been a lot of movement on this, on the advocacy level. Because what we're hearing from the utilities is they can't generate the supply. One thing that I'm frustrated with, they've been asking a lot of districts to do the feasibility studies through NYSERDA. And when they do it, and I've heard it almost unanimously from my counterparts, they're all being told that they need a new transportation center, that their facility is inadequate to handle the EVs. Which, you know, comes back, we're on the heels of a hundred plus million, our capital improvement project. Now we're going to have to go ask for more. I, I think there's a lot of variables that are going to be challenging for this, but they're not moving the mark off of this yet. And I sat with some legislators from the lower part of the state who said, well, just keep trying. The legislation's not changing and we certainly can keep trying, but eventually they're going to have to make a legislative decision. Because there's a question mark also of, well, if we can't do it as a district or our community says no, what are the ramifications? Are they going to hold back transportation aid? Are they going to hold back foundation aid? We, we don't have answers to those questions. And that's, I think that's the piece on building some surety and knowing that we can buy eight, buy ten, whatever the case may be. Maybe to be a little bit ahead of the curve. Because if we get to that point where they don't change legislation and then we're going to have trouble making movement, we have a legal obligation to offer transportation to our students to school. And we don't want to find ourselves in a position where we can't do that.
What was the, the life of a bus? About fifteen years?
Um, I, I don't want to marry myself to an answer, but a hundred and fif, it's more mileage than it is age. And they look at things like, are they starting to have rust issues, engine issues? Um, I'd say on average, you can get anywhere from a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy thousand miles on a bus. The diesel, the, obviously the diesel engines are going to last a little bit longer than the gas powered engines. So
And, and, and what is the salvage value of, of a, a bus with less than that miles? In other words, if you were, if you say we're going to replace our buses at a hundred fifty thousand miles, but you decide to replace a bus with only a hundred twenty thousand miles, is there any value to that bus that still has?
There is. There are districts that will put their buses out to auction. There's various different services that will partner with districts to be able to do that. Obviously, the better condition the vehicle is, the more money it's going to draw. An older bus, you'll see salvage companies maybe pay two, three thousand dollars a bus. But that's usually one that DOT has said, we're declaring this non salvageable. We don't want to see this vehicle on the road.
Google says between three thousand to a hundred thousand, depending on the bus.
So again, we'll tentatively start to move forward with this as a plan. Obviously, if things come up before the next board meeting, you know, feel free to communicate with us, but then we'll have a tentative plan ready at the next meeting. But we would, um, start to require some board action to place these reserves. So as I said, Mrs. Mulligan can finalize, uh, the year end for twenty four, twenty five and complete our filings with the state as well. Thank you.
So next up, eighth grade Washington DC.
Okay. So, uh, annually, our middle school for many years now has planned a trip to Washington DC for our eighth grade students. Post COVID, I believe this is now the third year post COVID that the trip is going again. And obviously, one of the largest concerns that our building level administrators and teachers stay very focused on are escalating costs of the trip at the same time. I just want to predicate that the planning for this trip almost takes a full year in advance between talking to the vendors, making sure that, um, the provider can have appropriate places for our students to stay. There's a lot of work on the, uh, the counseling staff and the social work staff to make sure that they're connecting with students to make sure that they understand why a student does or does not choose to go. But I know there's, there are some questions and concerns regarding the escalating cost of the trip and some of the action items that we as a leadership team can take to try to mitigate some of that. But I wanted to put this on as a discussion item tonight. One of the things that I will ask at the end of the conversation is, are we prepared to approve the trip for the twenty five, twenty six school year? Ms. Pangar is ready to add it to the consent agenda. If the board is comfortable with that, if there's more information we need to get, obviously we can get that. But I just wanted to open it up for conversation and dialogue so that if there are things that we can answer tonight, Ms. Mahoney is here to help with that. I will answer to the best of my ability or we can get it for our subsequent meetings.
I was, I was just saying something. I think, I think the Washington DC trip is, is a great opportunity for students, you know, um, I know here in East Green Bush, right? You know, we have longstanding traditions, right? And I think that, you know, this Washington DC trip is one of those traditions. So I think, um, you know, as we think about, and, and, you know, I got to put this as a seventh grade now, right? Next year, there'll be an eighth grade and I'll be looking, you know, to, um, you know, to, to, to send them on a DC trip. Um, so what I'm trying to say is that I'm very conscious of, of the cost, right? And how, you know, there are a variety of, of households of different income levels, right? But I think, and as we think about that, I think we have to think about everyone, right? Who, who, who looks at the district, right? Who participates in these trips? And, and just, you know, as we try to be sensitive towards community needs, that we also honor, right, tradition and just say, you know, how could we be more intentional and thoughtful and how we approach it? But I, but I think, you know, I, I think, you know, in my mind, we have to commit, right, to, to continuing, um, the tradition, right? Washington DC trip, Washington DC trip. We just think, you know, how can we do it better, right? You know, in my mind.
I've, I've already had an opportunity to meet with the leadership team at the middle school to think about those perspective changes that we can make. What can we do differently? How can we quote unquote sharpen the pencil, if you will, to try to mitigate the costs? Because you're absolutely right. It's an issue and we have to be cognizant of the families that we serve and making sure that everyone has access, who wants access to the trip. Because there is value. It's our nation's capital and if a family feels strongly, if they want their child to have that experience with their classmates, we want to be able to support that. And we need to make sure that we're looking at every avenue that we can to support that in a meaningful and respectful way to every family that does want to participate.
What is the price tag in total of this trip?
Can, can you help me with the, the three year history? That'd be great. Yes, please. No, that's more for people at home.
Oh, okay. Oh, that makes sense. Cause there's not going to go a lot in here. So the cost of this trip this year is five hundred and fifty five dollars. And that includes seven meals, the two nights in the hotel, the transportation, many tickets. For example, Arlington National Cemetery, the tram car, um, Holocaust tickets, sports theater. So it does include a lot. Plus they, every kid in the class, whether they go or not, gets a T-shirt. So all of that is embedded in the cost.
And do you have the three year look back too, and what we've been seeing in terms of increases on the costs?
Sure. Yeah. So, um, in twenty twenty three, the cost of the trip was actually five hundred and thirty dollars. Then the following year, it went down, um, to four hundred and ninety five. And that was because we got, um, a large donation, uh, from quick response. So that kind of what was able to go into offset some of the costs. And I believe at the time, there was some, um, discrepancy in the, what we were charged from Yankee Trail. So we got money back. So the trip did drop a lot. So it does look like it's increasing more than it is, when in reality, back in twenty So the trip did drop a lot. So it does look like it's increasing more than it is, when in reality, back in twenty twenty-three, it was five hundred and thirty. Um, last year, the cost was five twenty-five. And that's because we had a good amount of money in Appendix D from the previous year. I think it was roughly like twelve thousand dollars I, I sent. And I, we took six thousand out to pull some money off of each student's trip. Um, at this point, Appendix D, it, for this trip is, is pretty low, that I don't think it would even really make a dent, like maybe a couple dollars per kid. It's about four thousand. Um, so I'd like to leave that in there and try to grow that balance back up, but.
So historically, it looks like about a quarter of the students haven't participated in the trip. On, on average, and I'm sure that's for a multitude of reasons, but I am concerned, we're saying it's a class trip to have a full twenty-five percent. Not participating, cause to me, that's, that's not a class.
Right.
So i- if we're saying we're committed to helping every student go who wants to. If a hundred percent of the students said they wanted to go, but a quarter said they couldn't afford it, where would that money come from?
So it would have to be through specific fundraising on behalf of the students. And we'd have to work even harder at community donate, community donations to fill that gap.
Okay.
Right, cause there's three hundred fifty kids?
Uh, that was last year's cohort was very big, so there was like about three hundred fifty-three. This year, we're about three oh four. Um, the last three years, the average though, of those that have stayed back have been relatively the same, seventy-five to eighty students have stayed back. Um, and, you know, we're very cautious and aware in our office, the Blue House office. Um, as well as other counselors, we call every single student down that has not submitted their deposit. And ta- talk through that with them. Um, obviously, they're twelve and thirteen, so they might not fully understand, you know, the complexities of all of that. But um, pulling them down, why don't you wanna go? A lot of it is anxiety. Uh, the, the thought of trying to find roommates and go away from their families and just, just being away. I saw a lot of that last year, and I could only speak to last year in my conversations with the students. I know Mr. Newman probably saw a lot of the same stuff. Um, there were some students that were like, I don't know, and so then I would call home. And I would say, you know, if, if, if it's for whatever reason of financial, I don't wanna get into all that, we do have opportunities for you. We also work with our social workers through Catholic Charities, the Majewski Fund. Um, last year, they gave us over six thousand dollars. Every single student that we asked for assistance for, they provided that assistance, which was extremely generous. And not every student needed the full amount. Some parents were like, oh, I'll pay a hundred, can I have X amount? It's to cover plus the trip, so they were wonderful in covering the cost.
One, one thing I wonder about is how much ahead of time are we providing households?
Yeah.
Um, and I just wanna say, like, you know, like. Like, not just, not to show my age, but I remember when guys was like twenty bucks to. But I think I'm paying a hundred dollars today.
Yeah.
And, and, and I'm not saying, here's the thing, like, I don't wanna make light of five hundred dollars, right? Like especially with timing, depending upon what's going on, right, it can be a lot, right? But at the same time, right, I do think it's reasonable, right, for a whole field trip. Um, you know, and, and, but, but mind you, and, and it also depends on, right, socioeconomic status, right? And the truth is, you know, five hundred on top of clothes, on top of, we got free lunch now, but. I used to pay two hundred dollars a month for lunches, right, when we were paying. When you just add things on top of things, get boulders and, and, and this music class or whatever it is, right? And, 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 and families in struggle with those kind of things. So it's just that, like, I totally, totally understand, like, like, like the equity piece. Um, another concern, and, and I, I don't mean to just go, go off, but like impact what I started with. But I just wanna say that to me, like with the equity piece, it's also important that, um, those who look forward to it. Cause the idea of equity is that we're also not taking a rate from, right? It's a very important piece that, you know, we want everyone to feel good about the movement of trying to help others, right? And, and, and doing that, it's important that we do it intentionally, so, and that's just, you know.
I think it is something to look at, and it's something that I've, you know, being in this room for one year, have thought the same thing of, you know. Once we present to you and it is approved, and then I can put it out to families, and I like to have my meeting in October, which is what Mr. Newman has done in the past. Trying to get a deposit in within like a month and you're closing out on holiday time, you're getting a deposit in, and then the full amount needs to be in by about March. It's not a lot of time, um, you know, and I've talked to other districts and something to consider in the future is. Do we long-term plan out this, starting in sixth grade, class of twenty twenty-five? This is your, you know, and two hundred dollars a year.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, i- it's not so bad to put in a bucket.
Even in seventh grade, right?
Right, right.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I got the amount of the trip late August.
Yeah.
So, you know, but if you can ballpark, like it's probably gonna be around six hundred, like.
Make some more time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are there any other trips in sixth or seventh grade anymore?
Yeah, so sixth grade does, um, based on their team, they'll do their own field trips and then seventh grade is doing Boston.
Okay.
And I think that was about one forty-five, one fifty.
It was about one fifty last year.
Is that a day trip?
Yes.
One forty-five for a day trip, or five fifty for two nights? Because it's not a criticism of what you guys have done, it's pretty impressive.
Yeah.
But I, I do agree about getting the information out earlier. If this is a traditional trip and it always goes at the same time. You know, I have an eighth grader this year. So, you know, this timeline, really looking for me to come up with that five hundred fifty dollars in six months. Eleven hundred dollars if we're sending a chaperone. Whereas if I've known since sixth grade, that there's an expectation of a trip that will be approximately. Five fifty to six hundred dollars. It just, and, and if we're planning to do it every year, there's no reason not, I think, to present that information earlier. Um, maybe offer some fundraising opportunities in sixth and seventh grade, so we're not doing an entire heavy push in eighth grade. Maybe the, you know, the sixth grade, I don't remember doing any fundraisers, so maybe they do something that just goes into the account. Um, just to give families more time, cause like you said, it's the holidays. Tax bills were due for the school last month, they'll be due for the town after the new year. So it's a rough time of year to ask families that are already struggling to come up with an extra five hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes, yeah, and then you have twins and you have.
And these are all items that we've had some good conversation on, and we are going to pause at the beginning of the new year to make sure that we reevaluate the action plan. And how we communicate with families and what can we do to make this trip achievable for everyone who wants to be a part of it.
And do we, I, I know you say you bring down every student who hasn't um, put in a deposit. But even if the student gives you a reason that seems short, do we still reach out to the parent in every case?
So the counselors reach out, I, I, I'm being very honest when I say, like, sometimes the kids come down and they're, I do not wanna go. I never wanted to go, I don't wanna go, and I mean, as a, as a parent of a kid with anxiety, I get it, like, they are just like, I'm not going away from my parents, I'm not leaving. Um, so there are some kids, it's, it's pretty cut and dry, they just don't wanna go. But otherwise, yes, we are calling home, and there is a lot of back and forth. There are students who put in the deposit and then say, I don't wanna go, and we refund them, so. Um, you know, and then even if a deposit doesn't come in, we allow them more time to decide. Um, if they're on the fence with it, so definitely lots of phone calls, um, a lot of. You know, Ms. Desaro in our office is keeping an incredibly comprehensive list of every single thing that's coming in and out when she's talking to kids, so. It's all, it's a lot, once it gets going.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So if the board is comfortable, we'll ask Ms. Pangman to add it to the consent agenda for approval. Great. Thank you, Dean. All right, keep going.
Next up, your strategic plan.
So I was happy to be able to share with the board this week our, whoops, thanks so much. Our operational draft of our newest strategic plan. And I want to uh, spend some time explaining all components. How did we get to this? What does this mean for us? And really, how will this guide the district and inform the work that we do in the future? So going to go section by section here. So the beginning part of our newest strategic plan really talks about the process that we went through. And going back into the midpoint of last year, uh, the board chose to engage. And this is even before some of the timeline here, engage with an outside consultant. That was able to come in and uh, meet first with Mr. Simons and the district leadership team and talk about what the process would look like. And in that process, determination was made to do some community-based surveys. To talk about community meetings, to talk about online meetings with our staff and our leadership team. And it really helped that process to evolve into the timeline that you see here on the screen. So beginning in June of twenty twenty-five, right before the transition in superintendency. Community surveys went out and it really gathered a large amount of feedback from our staff, from our families. And from our students from uh, all parts of the district. That then launched into the transition period between uh, when Mr. Simons was finishing up and when I was taking over. And a lot of those meetings did happen virtually for us in the beginning to really talk about what the structure of the process would look like. What does the framework of a strategic plan look like? And how do we start to gather some of that community input? And have it turn into action items that we're gonna see at the end of this document. Probably one of the most telling parts of uh, completion of this plan was our blueprint day. Where we were able to bring stakeholders from all over the district, including board members, including students, including staff. To be able to start to really dissect and unpack the community feedback that we saw and turn it into action items. And I was talking, talking with Mark Adam, we had several hours that we were together. And that time flew back, flew by so quickly that as we were really starting to dive into it. It felt like the time was up and we almost felt like we needed more time. But if you look at the result of that blueprint day, you'll really see the culmination of the hard work that everyone put in. So, one of the great pieces that I think we can be very proud of is we really started to look at our, not only our mission and our vision. But really, what are our core values? What do we believe? We believe in kindness and compassion, positivity and enthusiasm, a true growth mindset. We want our students to be trustworthy, collaborative, we want to be community-focused, creative. And we really truly want to commit to a definition of excellence. And I think that was really such a, a telling piece on the work that came out of a, a voice of many. Forgive me, um, there are pieces, I've read this so many times already, and so has my assistant in my office. There are some typos that we are still working on. We'll make sure that the final draft that goes up does not have those typos in there. The next piece of it um, just talks about who was involved, it talks about the evolution of our plan. But when you get to the page on priority areas. This is really where it starts to define the prospective look on where are we headed from here. So based on the feedback that we saw from our stakeholder surveys. From the conversations that we had on Blueprint Day and our meetings with our leadership team. We essentially created three priority areas, or as I affectionately like to call them, three buckets that we could put our work into. The first being the student experience, next being the staff experience, and finally, the operations of the school district. If you go to the next page, it gets a little bit more explicit on what are we looking for in those goals. So under the student experience, we wanna create and support a school experience that fosters strong relationships and meaningful connections among students, staff and families. So as a priority area, the action steps that we take, we'll focus on that, that was the goal. For our staff, we want to provide consistent support, engagement, ensure opportunities for staff voice and collaboration. And approach professional development and staffing with intentionality. If you think about that from a budget perspective, we wanna make sure that the professional development that the district is supporting. Is done very purposely and aligned with the goals that we are seeing here in this plan. We want to communicate in a timely and transparent manner and establish cl- clear curriculum goals to guide our work. Finally, under operations, we want to maintain and modernize our operations and facilities. Ensuring a high-quality, safe and effective learning environment for students, staff and community. And the good news for us is a large amount of what you're going to see as action items in here are already being supported by our current capital improvement project. The last part of this uh, document really is essentially where I like to say the rubber hits the road. The one piece, and, and I'm not gonna go through and read every item, the one piece to keep in mind too, as we look at this. Is this is intended to be a living and breathing document. Everyone has had a voice in here in terms of what's important and how can we achieve this, or how can we begin to achieve these goals? It may be, some of the timing on this is not exactly where we need it to be. We may put something from one of these buckets into being heavily supported by the board, by the administration, by the faculty and our staff. But we may have a crisis. Who predicted the pandemic? All the best laid plans that you may put in place may need to be pushed down the road. And it is not uncommon either for you to see an action item that sits on a strategic plan to come up in a subsequent strategic plan. I use the example with the leadership team that while the capital improvement project here supports air conditioning on all the buildings. My previous district, we had uh, done a survey and had a quote from our construction manager for four buildings of air conditioning of forty-five million dollars. We had a community forum, there was not one person that came to the microphone that said yes. There was several hundred people. And one after another, the community said no. Several years later. They put air conditioning in one of the buildings. So keep in mind, the point of many of these items can carry from strategic plan to strategic plan. If you look at many of the action items, I want to define here. How we start to work on these. So we had an opportunity today with the leadership team to start to unpack this and discuss. What did this look like? And potentially, when we start to talk about goal setting at the building level with our principals and our department chairs. How do you start to pick off what's important? Well, of course, in the process, we started to identify a timeline. But now, the opportunity comes for our building principals and directors to start to go back and meet with their faculty and staff and unpack this even further. We were fortunate where many of our faculty participated in the process. So they've already been hopefully talking about this uh, and really starting to anticipate what's coming. But in terms of building action plans, they need to start to codify this into how do we start to achieve this? So keep in mind, pick any of these, and I'm not gonna pick anyone in particular. There may be a particular strategy that when I sit down with a building principal, for them to discuss how they're going to. Uh, achieve a particular professional development model, that that's going to become one of their actionable goals for that year. So that when we sit down at the end of the school year, we can discuss what was your metric on whether or not that was achieved or not? And what were some of the strategies that you used? There absolutely should be some symmetry amongst grade level bands. We should not see anything that obscure going from one elementary school to the next. But using a, an academic goal as an example. One school may have a little bit uh, higher performance level in ELA than the other. That might be okay for a, a building level focus to be on different literacy strategies, to be able to achieve a goal, working with the curriculum office. We may have air conditioning, if you wanna use a facilities goal, in one building versus another. So an actionable goal for the facilities department may look a little bit different for one building than it does for the next.
Looking at, like, for example, when we say expand job coaching and transition programming. What I'm wondering is, are all of these goals going out to all of the schools? So like, so in that example, like for job coaching, I'm wondering the impact on elementary. I'm just wondering, like, is it delineated at all, or is all of them going out equally? Yeah.
So it should always.
Yeah.
This is my perspective as an educator.
Yeah.
We should all know where our students are coming from.
Yeah.
And where they're going to. Absolutely, a kindergarten teacher certainly has a defined scope of curriculum that they're going to work with. But they should also know some of the requisite skills that they're going to need in first grade to be successful. Not that they have to be responsible for teaching them, but they should have a clear understanding of what they're working towards. Same thing when a, a student goes from middle school to high school. They should be knowledgeable in what the goal setting process is, but they still have their defined set of responsibilities in their grade level. And their disciplinary, or in their discipline area. So the answer is, they need to see it, but yes, they are only responsible for their grade level or their discipline area. So to, to use job coaching as an example. It's a high school responsibility, but that does not mean that in an elementary setting, you might not have a career day. A career day can be exposure to a variety of different things that at an age-appropriate and developmentally appropriate. Level, that children are starting to understand, what does it mean to be a school teacher, a fireman, a banker, whatever the case may be.
I also wanted to ask, like, thinking about like our student representatives, like um, Holly. And also like our, our student council, I'm wondering, and then thinking about the student experience, is there a plan to kind of engage students in this process?
Yeah. So when you start to talk about student engagement, and I've had this conversation so many times with teachers. It is easy to sit with someone that has high intellect and have conversations about what this document shows.
Yeah.
And if I go down to a third grader and put this in front of them, they're gonna take a crayon out, make a mark on it.
Yeah, yeah.
So you have to make sure that when you talk about student engagement, it isn't, it is at an age-appropriate level for them to understand it.
Sure.
And I would fully anticipate that our building administrators at our middle school and our high school, will put this document in front of them.
Yeah.
But they'll talk about.
Yeah.
What are the action items?
Yeah, absolutely.
They'll use the student council, they'll use the board rep to be able to start to talk about how does it have impact in the building.
Yes, thank you.
So. Thinking about where we go from here with this plan, and this is where it becomes of vital importance now. It is very easy to pick the one offs that are not here, and that's when you're talking about challenging budgets, when you're talking about really accomplishing a clear plan. It is so important to remember that this is truly a voice of the entire community. This is community members that responded to a survey, this is community members that came out to take part in an hour long, hours long session to be able to add to this. Our work over the next several years should really focus always back on what we're seeing here. It doesn't mean that we're not going to have the one off pieces, we're going to have a boiler that breaks, we're going to have a transportation problem, yes, we need to address those. But the core of our work should really focus on what's here. Now that we have the strategic plan codified, we need to think about the goal setting process. And when we start to talk about goal setting, it's at every level. It starts here at the board table for the Board of Education to establish your goals based on policy, governance and budget. It'll be with the goal setting process that we started talking about with our administrative leadership team today. How do they start to pick actionable steps here? And it will also talk about their conversations with their faculty and their staff in the building to really think about what that means. I think it would be important, looking prospectively from here, for the board to start to think about. How do the goals that we want to set support this work? And how can it support this work? And how do we want to measure that success? I would really think about a smart goal setting process. Obviously, you're all well aware of your responsibilities under policy, governance and budget. To think about if we set a goal for the balance of this school year, how are we going to assure that we have achieved that as a board? And how do we want to measure that? There's no defined way to be able to do that. My advice would be in the SMART process, think about a limited scope of number of goals. Sometimes if we set too many goals, we say we're going to set seven, 10, 12 goals. It becomes an exercise in futility. You're checking boxes because you're racing to try to get there and you're not really putting the proper effort into supporting what's here. Versus if you set three, four meaningful goals for the year, we can have temperature checks throughout the year to see how it's going. And if the board needs to work with the management and the leadership team to reallocate resources, to be able to restructure where we stand. Then we can ensure as we get closer to the end of the school year where we do a summary of how did we do? There's more likely that we will have achieved that goal and be able to move on to another action item within the plan in the subsequent year.
Quick, quick question, a pool of questions. No, but I'm thinking, so what I'm hearing is, I'm thinking short term, long term goals, right? Strategic plan is supposed to be long term and focused. We're talking like three, four, five, 10 maybe years, right? 10 is long, I know.
Three to five.
Certainly. But, but my point is, is that, right, so annual goals alone, right, won't really be necessarily like a target, right? It'd be a sub step towards a target where you, you know, you have micro goals where you say, you know, like if I plan to go to Harvard, right? And I'm in ninth grade, right? Like, I'm planning year by year about, you know, but it's also like what classes I might want to take, right? What kind of profile, you know, so, so in contrast, it's just how do we implement that kind of thinking into thinking about the strategic plan?
So I think if you look at some of the action items in here.
Yes.
I don't want to say it's been defined for us, but if you think about your administrative leadership team who has the expertise and the authority of. Knowing how they evaluate process, you'll look at things like ongoing. Some of that means that this is going to be an item that they're going to look at in perpetuity versus some of the short term things that just simply need to be addressed. They, they've already bumped it up to, we got to get to this this year. This is something that's high priority for us. The opportunity is there that when it's accomplished, it becomes sustainable through time.
Yeah.
Then you don't need to constantly go back to it because it becomes part of your, your operations, if you will, in terms of how you manage your building and or department.
I think what I was trying to say, like, I'm wondering, are we going to have long term targets as well as, like, like, so when you say like board goals, for example, right? That's kind of like what I'm thinking, or all the other goals that's going to lead to the supporting of this work. I'm thinking long term goals, will we have both long term, short term? Is that the direction you're thinking? That totally here like on, on a, you know, more operational level. And I'm not sure if I'm, if I'm missing something.
When I, when I think about long term goals, I think about more, those are more district level goals. You know, Mrs. Mogan spoke earlier about the reserve plan.
Yeah.
We've struggled as a district to have a reserve plan.
Yeah.
You know, there's been huge variation in terms of what we've seen on state aid, we were coming out of the pandemic. Those goals are more long term, district based goals.
Yeah.
A long term goal that you could work with as a board is, well, how do we partner in the budget process to support a long term reserve plan?
Yeah.
Your short term goals are really.
I get what you're saying.
Are a better focus for the board.
Saying this is kind of, I got, I got.
These are your action items that you can support as a board of education. You can look at your responsibilities and policy. To say, how does it relate to what our community has articulated for us to be able to support through policy, through governance and through budget?
So a couple of questions. I think this is a great document. I, one, you know, I'm very interested in sort of like the operationalizing of it. And so what are we going to kind of commit to? Is it a quarterly type on the agenda where we get an update? I think also, I'm, I'm interested how the, the time, the, the timeline of the action items. And the timeline of the blueprint reconcile, because it looks like the blueprint is going to go through sort of a rollout and approval process and then sort of a budgeting process. But we have action items that are starting, like, we're apparently doing a transportation feasibility study this fall. Is that funded and like, you know, like, just like, how do we reconcile those things?
So.
And what's that process for actions that need appropriations and come back and then, yeah.
Yep. Perfect question. So this question came up again already at the, at the administrative roundtable this morning. Keep in mind, this is a living, breathing document. We just went through a major transition. You have a new superintendent command, you've had changeover in the business office, you've had changeover in the curriculum office. We already have that conversation today that the timing on this by mid-year this year, we may need to already reevaluate where we stand. That's okay. There's nothing wrong with that. So it's kind of tie that into your next question. How do we evaluate? I've always done a mid-year check in rather than a quarterly check in, a quarterly check in. You just started the school year, you'd almost be at a quarter already, you're not going to get that information out. You're not going to get that much information out of doing quarterly check ins. We can absolutely do it. But I, I think we're going to be better served at pausing at the mid-year point to really talk about how is it going and dig into what can we potentially. Transition on for the new year. In terms of some of the action items that are already here, I'll use the example of the feasibility study, the good news is, is it's pretty much funded by NYSERDA. They, they already pay, they pay for that for us, which is, which is a good thing, but we're very conscious of the pieces that are already moving. Lisa and I were talking about some of the curriculum items that have already been in process. I was anxious to get this finished for exactly the reason that you are bringing up here. I think moving into the new year, we'll be a little bit further ahead of the curve to be able to have this conversation in late August, beginning of September, rather than where we are now. We are going to be doing a little bit of catch up for this year. The last piece, I think that will tie this together, the one thing that I think is important for us to define is, is when do we finally want to snap a line in the sand and say. How much have we accomplished? And is it time to restart this process again? This does not, it's not married to one definitive entity. It doesn't say that in June of two thousand twenty eight, this ends. If we find that, boy, we've made some really good progress here, well, maybe time to reset and bring the community back together again and says. Do we need to look at our goals again? Do we need to look at a new action plan because we've made really good progress? We've operationally completed a massive capital improvement project. We've made the transition to EV. We've restructured artificial intelligence within curriculum and instruction by our classroom teachers looks definitively different. You have to evaluate that as you go and figure out where, where does it, where's the time to end it to be able to move into the new phase of what this may look like after.
Yeah, and I'm a strong proponent of giving everybody longer runways. This is a very aggressive plan and, you know, and I think let's do it right, like, right, these are great actions. Give the time needed to get these done. And I would also just say as far as like, you know, maybe we even lock into a standard sort of bucket of time, you know, like. Almost like fall semester, you know, and like I look at the, the year in kind of three buckets, like a fall, a winter, sort of fall, spring and then summer, just for sort of consistency. And also like mapping across the year too, right? Like if we lock into, yeah.
And that's almost historically what I've always done.
Yeah.
You do, you do a beginning of the year goal set. At the end of the first semester, you evaluate where you stand and by the end of the school year, you talk about your accomplishments.
I want, I want to second that time narrative of, you know, education.
See, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I actually have a couple of comments. It's a very comprehensive, well thought out document. I appreciate all the work that's been done. For me as a board member, what I look at, as I really look at. The priority, what you've put together up to the action plan. For me, the action plan is what you're going to work on with your team. And how you're going to accomplish the broader goals that are set out for the district on whatever timeline you think is appropriate. And I think the board's support would be, what do you need from us to fiscally support, policy support? To accomplish what you've set out to accomplish. Agree with everybody about the timelines. If you think you'd accomplish something when you can, but then you have to modify it, fine. I think that's, that's the role that you will play in the reporting back to the board about what you need to help accomplish these very comprehensive, a lot of action plans. You know, I was very impressed by the numbers. Just a couple of suggestions for me and for the community would be to, on your action plan, when you refer to anything like SEL frameworks. Link those pieces to the document if this becomes, you know, the final product. So that if I click on something as a community member, I know what is the framework, you know? I was glad to hear about the piece on, because there's a couple of sections just in the beginning. There's a commitment to do certain things, like strong language, like will do some things. And I just want to make sure that if we're committing to certain things, that it's fiscally sustainable, like you mentioned about the AC example. We may not be able to hire mental health counselors because of a budgetary issue. So how does that impact what you're trying to do? Through the plan and making sure that if we don't have that opportunity. Will there be ever be an opportunity to do that? I, I think it's a, we want to do those kinds of things. You always want to support students. Job coaching, transitions, things like that. But there also becomes an affordability perspective of how much can be accomplished? So making sure that you inform the board too, that if, if this is a priority goal for our kids and our families, we need to put that, embed that in the, in the budget process. Which we want to start very soon, right? Earlier, better, that's soon, I shouldn't say soon. Earlier than typical, because I think it would be helpful to align with this document. The other piece is, how do you see this aligning with the portrait of the graduate work? I don't see a lot of mention of it in here, so just talk to me about that a little bit.
So the challenge, and Lisa and I talk about this almost daily.
Okay.
The challenge of the portrait of the graduate is, the district has run so far ahead and done such good work. The state just hasn't finalized. What is it going to look like?
Okay.
That's the struggle right now to be able to definitively define that. I think we are so well positioned at, especially at the secondary level on work that we do for vocational students, the work that we do for college and the high school experiences. To make sure that if a student chooses an alternative pathway besides regents, we are well positioned for that. That will require some work at the elementary level to make sure that we have that K-12 symmetry that we were talking about before. But until we have a, a clear definition of what that's going to be. I think a lot of the work that's already happened fits into some of the action items that are here. But we don't know what truly the end product is that we're working towards yet. Lisa, did I miss any gaps?
No, that was actually, I, New York State actually has put out a portrait of a graduate as well.
Yeah.
One of the things that I think we should do as a district is align the New York State Portrait of a Graduate with ours. And really just take a deep dive and try to merge them so that, that's probably the beginning, that's where we start, right? Right there. And then when we know that in twenty twenty seven, our, you know, we're going to one diploma. So we need to be, we need to be ready for that and we're, so I think the fact that we already have a portrait, we're going to merge with New York State's. They're getting, you know, they have some work they still have to do. They're trying to determine what our pathways need to be as well. We'll do that work and, and we'll be ready for it. I'm already thinking about it.
I, I just want to say that, like, I, I do, I, I think it might not just be explicitly listed, but when thinking about like one diploma, one path ways, right? Focus on student experience, right? I think a lot of that kind of like, like, you know, is, is here and just not explicitly linked. And I just, I just, I just wanted to say too, like, what I'm wondering about is, just, just about. How to approach these goals creatively as an administration, right? Like, so when I hear like, for example, job coaching and transitions, like what I'm wondering is, is like, and mind you, I'm not trying to set it direct, but I'm just wondering, how could we be creative in our approach? And when we really think job coaching and transition programming and really put our, our students, you know, our future leaders in a position to really. Hands on, you know, understand what the options are, right? We have huge employers locally like Regeneron, right? Or the med or, or, or the chip plants, right? And I'm just wondering, are there any community partnerships where we really could get students out in the community, engaged and visually experiencing, right? What, what the world has for them? That, that, that's kind of some of the things. So, so when I think of the student experience, like really, the whole idea to me of education is like, how to become a full person, right? Once you find yourself, you can find whatever else is for you in life, right? So the more that you experience, the more you kind of get, get your hands on that, right? So, so, so that, that's what I think student experience, that's where I think the student engagement piece is so important because, you know, there's aspects, you know, some, some of us. Really all of us are so removed sometimes, it's hard to know this generation, you know, what's different, right? Like what is the values and what is the direction? How do we help them get there? So kind of like with Mike's question where he's talking about like the action plan, what, what do you need from the board? I think we also need that same perspective with how we approach students too, like what do they need from us? You know, and I think it really applies in every, every aspect of the work we do.
Yeah, I, I think when you talk about, and we'll use job coaching as an example, that we have to carve in half.
Yeah.
We certainly can talk about the students where perhaps we can create internship opportunities, we can talk about post K-12, post P-12 education for them. But if we're talking about all students, we, we also need to talk about students who are not college bound. We have a relationship with. A, a job coach that comes in to support students that are non-traditional learners and they have an opportunity to make sure that. They understand that the pathway that they are headed on, they're going to be able to support themselves and they're going to have opportunities to be successful in life at the same time. Talking about those community partnerships, that's a direct community partnership that comes from the outside to be able to work with those students. So that post P-12 experience, the readiness to sustain themselves.
Yeah.
You're absolutely spot on. We've talked about career internships and what does that look like and how do we access the great things that we have available to us? Not just here in East Green Bush, but all throughout the capital district. Accessing those, those businesses are hungry in many cases. To have those partnerships because they are a source of labor. As we look at the changing landscape of higher education right now, and we see more and more students making the decision that this is not for me.
Yeah, yeah.
Those are great opportunities for those students to have a clear career path and to be able to be successful and sustain themselves.
Entrepreneurship too, like I always think, but sometimes, yeah, yeah.
We have some great things going on at the high school right now, and I think it's really going to be about building on those.
Yeah.
We have pathways, business pathways, career and finance, and we have ones for. Business administration and we have the seal of civic readiness, the seal of biliterancy. So I think that it's going to be really important that we build on those and we start tapping into some of those, our partner community, you know, businesses. We'll be definitely looking into that stuff. And we have career jam coming up in October for eighth grade. And the entire eighth grade cohort goes to that at Hudson Valley. So I think you, I, I know Dr. Coats also talked about, we have to start at the elementary level. I, I say build awareness. Just let them know what, what are having job, job day where, you know, where the parents come in and, and then the middle school, I see that's an opportunity to begin exploring. And then I see the high school as almost finding our, a potential pathway, right? And then we all, we're going to change our minds, but having that pathway and hopefully giving them opportunities for that.
So I would think back to the strategic plan, do we, I mean, is there Mike an interest in sort of flagging things that are directly related to Portrait of a Graduate? Or do you think?
No, I think at this point, I, I was just making sure that it wasn't lost in any of the.
Yeah, or would that be, yeah, okay.
And I think once, they've, they've already worked on it. I just wanted to hear how they dovetail things. I think for me, it was more. Where does that lay in terms of this process and that process and where they come together? So it's in kind of working, working there.
We're just anxious for the end product. One of the last things that Mrs. Mahar went to was a little bit of a hurry up and wait.
Yeah, I know you're way ahead of most places.
They have, they have a timeline and a roadmap as well. They have a, they have a timeline and a roadmap as well, but they know they're kind of slow playing it a little because, what we do.
The fact that the Federal Department of Education is collapsing around us and a lot of, a lot of our accreditation with the federal government is tied to some of what we do and assessment. I think that has been a challenge for the state education department.
One, one thing, as I look through the last part on operations, it has a lot of community piece. Would you be open to changing that to operations and community, something, something to that effect? If the board would support that, because I think it it does has a big piece of community engagement and relations and things like that. And I think operations to me would just say, oh, it's just like, how things go, you know, how things work. And I think you lose sight of the fact that there's a big emphasis on the community in there, which is just terrific.
So if I can make a recommendation, um, you've given us some good pieces to go back and work on. At our October eighth meeting, um, I'd almost like to propose a, a mini workshop model, where we can go back and work on a lot of what you have recommended here to come up with some proposed goals, based on what we see as priority items for the board. And we could work through together defining what potential good board goals will look like and how we would propose and intend to measure. And that way, if the board was comfortable and we could get to a good place, if you were, uh, prepared to, you could adopt those goals for this school year. And that would in turn allow the administrators to be able to start that work, or I should say move forward with that work, because they've already started it, with some definitive, uh, ideas of what the board goals have been set for for the year.
Yeah, I mean, I like that. What do you mean by mini workshop? Like at a board meeting?
Yes.
Um, one thing I would suggest too is we had a, like a subcommittee in the past, right, Jesse? Where a few board members kind of did the work with you, either the board president, vice president, a couple of folks. And then the mini workshop turned into here's kind of our, what we've come up with as a, as a. You know.
The board is comfortable with that.
And I think, just because I think that will,
Yeah.
help bring the views of the board president, the vice president, whoever wants to volunteer for that piece of it, then bring it to the full board. Um, and then we can have a conversation about whether that is, you know, is fitting in with that versus starting from like, just coming forward with something.
Absolutely.
Just an interest of time. I'd be glad to work on something. I I seem to have a lot of time. And all season is one.
So Kim and I then will work together, even if we need to do it virtually, I'm fine with that, or if the team wants. All right, we can work together.
I didn't want to, I mean, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Because it just helped to move the process along. Great.
I'd love to be utilized more if there's any surveys you wanted me to put out to students or anything like that. So if you were doing a sort of like little group of people like that, you always come up with anything that you would like to do. I know that I need to come up with things on my own as well, but, um, yeah, and feel free to ask me questions. I love the way you worded your question about being creative in schools and like, being creative with all these items that seem very daunting and everything like that, considering the student perspective. So thanks for the way you said that. It will be useful.
Great.
Absolutely.
Alex, having a student representative is really important to the board. And I think, you know, becoming more comfortable with the surroundings and asking questions and will support you a hundred ten percent, believe you, to do whatever you need to do.
That's, this is what we are.
This is the culmination of years of trying to get this, somebody on the board.
Okay, well, last but not least, the regionalization plan. So, um, New York State started a process almost two years ago now, where, uh, and this happens approximately every ten to fifteen years, where regional BOCs are tasked with working with or component school districts to look at opportunities for greater efficiencies within school districts, for opportunities to collaborate more closely, to enhance academic program. And, uh, this process, I will say, was a little bit more challenging this time. Please know that the, uh, the ability for school districts, if you will, to opt into this process is exactly that. Every school district in New York State has the opportunity to say whether or not they want to participate in the regional, uh, regionalization process, if you will. If they choose to do so, then they are part of submitting a survey, which East Greenbush said yes to. That survey goes to, uh, the regional BOCs. The regional BOCs then takes all the input from surveys, where districts gave feedback on what they would like to see in a regionalization plan. And then they come up with a template by which they're going to submit to the state education department. So the template that, uh, is up on the screen that I shared with you is the culmination of that work. I'm going to ask Mrs. Mahar to talk about some of the components of what is here and what our, uh, participation in this process would look like.
So East Greenbush will participate in more of a consultation basis with Rensler, um, our Rensler County, uh, Questar three BOCs. So they identified five areas that we will work on. I'll talk about four of them. So the first area actually is in my wheelhouse, ELA and math student outcomes. They, their school improvement team analyzed the data that was collected across all these areas. And they determined, uh, areas that needed to be worked on. But we already really work with Questar three. We do a lot, we have, we purchase units and we work with their Questar, they're called their specialists. So we work with an ELA specialist, a math specialist already. They're doing embedded work. We will continue with their PD offerings. I already noticed that they have PD offerings that are specifically aligned to this regional plan. I'm thinking of one in particular is one on fractions. They identified an area of that needs to be worked on, and there is a workshop already. So we will continue to communicate to our staff about these regional, the professional development that's offered through Questar three BOCs. And we will, you know, prove those as often as we can. So we'll work on that communicating. And we also do a lot with, we're adopting programs with the New York State Literacy Brief. And now we have the New York State Numeracy Briefs coming down, so this is perfect timing. And Questar three, those specialists have been supporting us with the adoptions as well. So we're really excited about that, actually, that work. Second item they talked about, which is really important, is they, they noticed a need for staff and student attendance. So in the region, as we all know, there's a struggle with getting our staff here and, um, getting them to, you know, come to work. And then also same with the students. So they're noticing that we need to work on that. We need to have, you know, when we have a student here, we get more better student outcomes. So one of the things that we're doing is we're going to really revisit our attendance policy. And we're going to be looking at the Questar three BOCs for their specific suggestions and strategies on how we can improve that. And we're going to welcome staff and student initiatives to improve that yearly attendance. So that's really, also, we're excited about that. Number three, as many of you might also know, there is a, a deficit in staffing in general, just finding a teacher for science or social studies and, and and then getting them to stay. I mean, that's not just East Greenbush, that's, that's in the region. So they identified that as an area of of need to recruit and retain educators. So here, one of the things I'll say in a positive way, East Greenbush is already, we're already working on that. We, we already brought in an internal mentor here at East Greenbush Schools, a mentor coordinator. And I really think that in of itself, she is a cheerleader, she is truly a cheerleader and coach. But her first meeting I actually went to, and I got feedback from several mentors saying, she is such a a positive, just ball of energy and a real, really inspiring, so motivating. I'm really excited about that. Partnering with local universities to recruit, you know, that's one of the things we're going to work on it with HR as well. And I know, I just want also shout out that Dr. Coats has been doing some weekly videos. I hope you've all been watching. I've been watching every week. And he actually, if you noticed, when he was at Transportation Department, he put in a plug for our hiring, we needing, needing transportation and bus drivers. So I think that outreach is really going to help that visible presence we have in the schools and and really showing that we care about every department, that it 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 takes a family or say, they say a village, um, you know, to raise a child. And it's truly, it's true. So I think that's one of, you know, that, that communication and transparency is important. And we've talked about AI, so they they recognize that it's important that we get ahead of that. AI is moving faster than we are, and they want to conduct, uh, you know, they, they're calling it a, a task force. And we're going to ask our Director of Technology to be part of that. And I do know that Peter Goodwin also wants to get ahead of that by creating a subcommittee. And there's one more that Dr. Coats will.
So the last piece is a little bit more complex, what Mrs. Mahar was just discussing. If you have nine different school districts that are working on a math initiative, why should nine different school districts individually pay for consultants, pay for professional developers when there's a greater opportunity for economies of scale? The last piece that is in the, uh, Questar regionalization plan, we need to differentiate between this word regionalization and consolidation. Around the state, we have seen smaller school districts that are struggling financially, having to make the decision on when the financial forecast for them is that potentially they're not going to make payroll in a year, two years, three years. How do we stay a viable school districts? Consolidation is exactly that. Right now, there is large financial incentive from Albany and from the Comptroller's Office for school districts to consider consolidating. Specifically in the Questar plan that's going to go to the state education department. Right now, an enlarged city school district is the only school district that can reach out to consolidate with a central school district. A central school district cannot reach into a city school district and consolidate. The area sees that as a problem. We'll use the example of, and and I can talk about it openly because it's been in the news, Troy and Wine and Skill right now. Wine and Skill has been very transparent that they are facing some real fiscal challenges. And we're open to a conversation with the city of Troy on a consolidation. Because Troy initiated that and Troy would essentially be annexing Wine and Skill that is permissible under the law. Also, right now, keep in mind, the state is putting huge financial incentive in place for districts to do that. So if that merger between Troy and Wine and Skill goes through, that merged school district would not only receive its foundation aid, but they would receive also a large sum over, I think it's a fourteen year win, fourteen or fifteen year window of what they call consolidation aid at the same time. So there is a very significant financial benefit. Now, there is a, a challenge to that, that two communities need to reconcile, why are we doing this? What's the mascot going to be? Is this going to close a school building? Is this going to have layoffs, whatever the case may be? And and that is difficult for school communities many times to reconcile. But the downside is, how far does a program degrade? Because a small school district or a school district cannot fiscally sustain that anymore in the model that it's under. It's an important process to think about. The region has identified that, that we as a region need to look more critically at that. They're asking for some flexibility for the law to be changed that, if a, a central school district wanted to go to a small city school district and talk about that consolidation, we could, you wouldn't have to wait for a city school district to come to you. Again, I think you're going to see more of this. I think, what did they say? There's seven around the state right now that are pending. I forget the exact number. But you're going to see this more and more. There was just recently an article that I saw in the state of Pennsylvania. Late sixties, state of Pennsylvania had twenty five hundred school districts in it. Somewhere in the mid to late eighties, they went down to five hundred. There's legislation before the PA legislature to try to reduce that even down to a hundred. So I think they'll get there, probably not. But I think that you're starting to see more regionalization of school districts just from a, a financial, a fiscal sustainability window, that you have to look differently at, how can we best support our classroom teachers and our building level leaders? We need to be more mindful of of our resources and being able to do that.
Quick question, Dr. Coats, um, so are we saying that there are any prospects that we would, this is what I'm thinking, right? I, I, you know, so revenues expenditures, right? I just want to keep it like, like, so this is increasing revenues, right, is a challenge for a district, right? And I think regionalization offers an opportunity, not just to help a smaller, the region, right, and and additional children, but also an opportunity to gain additional revenues, right? Because at the end of the day, on a per pupil basis, but then you have to be able to absorb the expenditures. But I'm just wondering, prospectively, like, and and what I'm wondering is, are we in a position to regionalize? And and I don't think that we know today, right, that what, how it's going to impact our financial picture, right? But I'm just saying that obviously it would, right? And, um, so, so I'm just curious about the conversation in general. That's, that's, I just, it's a comment.
So let's just make sure we're defining the two phrases correctly.
Yes.
Regionalization, I I will say, is everything up to the last item on here?
Yeah.
Common professional development.
Yeah.
Common use of resources. The financial impact of that.
Yeah.
You'll be able to see it.
Yeah.
Is it as significant as consolidation?
Yeah, yeah.
No, I just, the, the hard part is when you start to talk about consolidating in school districts, it almost always means pretend, the potential of the building closing. It means,
Yeah.
community identity questions.
Yeah.
You know, you, you think about the backbone of any community.
Yeah.
It's their schools.
It is the schools, yeah.
It's a challenge.
Yeah.
But when we also think about what we want to give to our classroom teachers, our building leaders, and ultimately our students.
Yeah.
We have to look a little bit more critically, because when we're talking about deficits.
It's only going to be a whim of the district, and and it will help a smaller, smaller district struggling. I hear you.
So again, regional leaders have talked about this as an important priority item for us all to consider.
Yeah.
So the, uh, template for the regionalization plan, this does not require any board action. It's important that you're aware of this, because obviously the district has committed to be a part of the action items here with our BOCs. I will sign off on this. This will go back to BOCs and, uh, Questar will affirm with, uh, state education department that all districts that have said they're committed will stay committed. And we'll continue to update you on, uh, any progress that we see and any work that we do in relation to the regionalization plan.
Just make a comment, um, just so I'm clear, so, well, we're, I read the certification piece and we're committing to only the parts that we agreed to, right? So I just want to summarize quickly. The three through eight income PD, professional learning, staff and student attendance, working on that. Uh, recruitment, AI, and then this regulatory change is proposed. My concern is, we just talked about strategic planning and resources. I don't want to see this, um, pull resources away from things that work that we want to do internally to a regional, um, approach. If the BOCs is going to work to provide the staff and support internal staff, like, for example, you mentioned AI. And Peter, he wants to do a subcommittee internally with AI, which is in our blueprint. I don't want him told to do things for the region if he has work to do here. So I just want that balance, I guess, like one is the balance of staff resources to support our kids and our, our work here. And hopefully dovetails nicely into what's happening here, but that's a lot of stuff to work on. You know, and and certainly we're, we're a high performing district in the region. And so I know, I appreciate the extra support, I guess, but how are we benefiting from that? Then, you know, maybe some additional support, you know, versus other districts.
So the, so the good news is there, and and this is, uh, actually have the same conversation with another superintendent. There is no defined metric.
Okay.
On what defines participation.
Okay.
So that doesn't mean that because.
So we support these, this plan, but we may not.
We send one faculty member, we send one administrator. It doesn't mean that I have to send three to five people from every building, which would take an exorbitant amount of resources away from the work that we're doing. I think there are some pieces in here where there are some great growth opportunities for the district, but I actually, I absolutely understand that concern.
Very good.
There's nothing that locks us in to eight people.
Thank you.
Yep. That will conclude my short discussion items for tonight.
All right, moving on to regular business. Uh, voice swimming merger with Troy and CPA for the twenty five, twenty six winter season. Anybody have any questions or comments on that? Okay, motion to approve, uh, Mike, second, RP, all those in favor? Okay, and then, policy fifty six ninety five and fifty six ninety five are students and personal electronic devices.
So just the, the quick explanation of this. In the distraction free learning policy, uh, the medical sign off form, there was some concern about who was responsible for signing off on the form. All that we did was change that it would be the medical director who would sign off on the form. And our internal nursing staff would simply just affirm that all the proper documentation gets to the medical director, either to sign off on it or to decline it and send it back. Otherwise, it largely stays exactly how it was.
Any questions? Any questions or comments? Motion to approve. RP, second, Kathy, all those in favor? And then many reports. Nothing?
Thank you, Marty.
I'm not, I won't say much about CCS. Should I, should I, am I ready? I'll just quickly. So, uh, we had our first CCS meeting, our curriculum study meeting. And we just did a quick, we, the first meeting is always just a generic. It's an outline organizational meeting. We reviewed the program review that we conducted last year was PE and health. So I've been talking to Chris Hosley and he will, he would like to present on October 29th. So in October, I will bring that to, um, Dr. Coats and he will review it before we, and then he'll break the presentation here on the 29th. Hopefully that'll be ready. We're conducting two program reviews this year, English Language Learners, which is new and for school counselors. So I'm really excited about that. And we just had a quick technology update. I usually typically give them a quick professional development update and we just talk a little bit about. Usually people let us know if there's something really exciting going on and, and Megan just did that. And I think Megan talked about her T-shirts, the life of an educator.
Any questions? No?
All right, board committees, I have two handouts for you. So as per our conversation on board committees, we met as a leadership team to try to absorb the recommendations that we had discussed last time. And drill this down into an operational document for you. And one of the things that morphed out of our conversation on committees were where did we typically see a board member as a standing member on a particular committee? Versus what was more an operational portion of the district where there was an opportunity for a board member to come if they so chose, but it wasn't typical that you really saw a standing board member on the committee. So what we did was we took all of the recommendations that we had. And I believe that Stephanie is going to agree this one more time. And if she hasn't already shared this with me digitally, you'll also get this digitally. But then we, uh, tucked in as subcommittees, some of the work that we discussed, for instance, code of conduct. So we put the athletic code of conduct under the code of conduct committee. We, um, redefined long range planning and facilities to just simply long range planning, if you will, to be able to talk about how does, uh, not just facilities, but we use the example that we discussed tonight of things like reserve planning. How does that fit under finance and audit? Finance and audit policy committee, uh, there used to be a standalone attendance policy. We put that under the policy committee for an ongoing conversation. And then, like I said, the other, uh, committees that were more in district operations, we put down below. What we also did, being mindful of our conversations on timing of meetings and making sure that it was feasible for board members to try to attend these meetings as, uh, you're all extremely busy and have lives outside of your roles here as board members as well. We tried to be very conscious of the feedback that you gave to Dana and placing board members where they had requested to be. And also looking at the timing of those meetings. In no way, shape or form is this meant to be final draft. We tried to take all of the information that you gave us, consolidate it down to something neat. And we always can, can make amendments here. We can make changes. We can still go back and revisit. But we tried to take all of the information and, um, consolidate it to a workable document. The only piece I'll ask the board to just be cognizant of where there's typically a, uh, sitting board member on a particular committee. On one side, just be careful of, you don't want to hit a quorum because that defines a board meeting. But the other side, if there's only one or two people on a, a committee, might have an additional stand then if someone can't attend that particular meeting. I think this is a great opportunity for you to have a good glimpse on, uh, operations in the school district and questions that we can answer. But again, I, I just wanted to, uh, to organize everything that we had spoken about in the previous meeting and get this to you so that committee meeting schedules can move forward.
That was just great. Is there any gaps that you need filled at all that I was like, the board members?
I don't think we, I, I don't think we saw any particular gaps that we can go through again. Like I said, just the ones where there's only one or two, I, I have some concern because people do get busy and sometimes you, you want representation there.
I, I can back up Rob. Rob on the code of conduct, athletic code of conduct. I did that in the past. If I may just be like an alternate.
Jenny's taking notes.
I, I have been on that for a while. That can be, I can go and Rob has something or I have something, at least we have, have it covered.
Otherwise, I think we're in, in pretty good shape.
Yeah, I was on it last year, but I don't need to be, maybe. I mean, but I can be if you need me.
Which one's that?
The appendix D.
Hope that was the fun committee. It's late. We think everything, right?
One, one note I'll make, that Business Advisory Council Committee. Um, it's, it hasn't, it didn't meet at all last year. And, and I, you know, we've talked a lot about opportunities to engage students and there's also been the high school involving local business last year that kind of caused some concern about how they were selected. So I think it could just be an opportunity, maybe to.
And, and Jenny shared that with me when we met to, to review all this. That's why we wanted to try to get somewhere with a concrete schedule
Yeah.
To force us to move forward so we can have those conversations. I bring up one more thing related to committees. As we're a member of the School Boards Association, there is an opportunity to select a voting delegate to the School Boards Association. Um, that is not necessarily something that you need to vote on, but you would just select amongst yourselves. Most of those meetings are virtual so that you would be able to, as you so choose, have that person attend the meetings. But I would say the School Boards Association is a very powerful lobbying organization, advocacy organization for school districts around the state. It is good to have someone partake in that and to, to have your voice heard as a voting member to that committee. So just wanted to share that and see if you wanted to pick someone to take on that role.
I'm a hard no on this one.
I think we did receive the date of the first meeting.
Yeah.
If I recall, that's October 16th.
Correct, at 4:00 PM.
At 4:00 PM. And there was a training, a virtual training, I think the Tuesday of that week. If I recall correctly.
October, uh, no, just reading the email. Registered by, it doesn't say when the training would be.
Okay, there was a training, which I think was earlier that week. Um, just to give a little bit of perspective on, on what they're looking for, but it did not, what I received did not provide me any further information about what would be required after that.
I would love to participate. My only reluctance is like, I'm on the DEI commission committee for NICE, but I'm on a resolutions committee. I just joined the, the, the Black Caucus there. So, so, so like, I would take a backseat if someone else want to participate as well.
What's my position? I see, I'm the legislative liaison for this.
No one volunteers, I would sign up for.
So is that part of my, with that, I mean, I'll do it.
I think the advocacy piece when you go to the legislature.
Yeah.
Yeah. We do, I mean, the voting delegate typically has brought the resolution.
Yes.
Given back and then brought those back to the board. And then they're, you know, we say yay or nay in a lot of things and we bring our voice back.
Yeah.
Yes. You gotta like those processes.
Yeah, yeah.
And Mary likes those processes.
And where they are powerful is around things like budget.
Yeah.
The School Boards Association is a, a powerful voice when the budget process starts to take place right next door in Albany.
Definitely.
Yeah, I mean, if no one wants to do it, I'll do it. It's, I mean, I'll do it.
I've got an email somewhere.
Thanks, Rob.
Sure.
Thank you. Yes.
All right, uh, table movements. All business. All right, consent agenda.
Yes.
All right, uh, any questions or comments on the consent agenda? All right, uh, motion to approve. Uh, Rob, second, Mike, all in favor? Any new, new business? Second public forum. Uh, board forum starting.
Like a 10-minute presentation.
Uh, and we do need to have an executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person. So a motion to move into. RP, second, Kathy, all those in favor?